All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is Tuesday, August 13th, 2019. It's 5:30 PM. We are in a conference room at City Hall. Call is making order. We do have a forum. The City of Raleigh reserves the right to convene recess to realign the regular session or order of this at the same time prior to adjournment. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is Item 2A, which is discuss the FY 2020 proposed budget. So, thank you all for being here in this special work session. And, Brian, I assume you're gonna take this away?
I'll kick it off, Mayor. Thank you. Councils, I want to kind of just have a brief conversation about how we can kind of divide this book up. We'll kind of try to do this logically. We would like to start with the General Fund and the Governor's Fund, and that's going to obviously include property taxes, sales taxes, the pay plan, staffing, some legislative changes. And then, I thought it would be good if we had the unfunded list, so we can kind of look at what's in and what's not. And then, on August 20th, what we thought we would do is we would go with the CIP, but I would like to delay the utility fund for that night, too, because I think that the rate strategy is integral to the capital improvements. And so, in a way, you can't do one without the other. So, we're not going to modify our strategy to what is being proposed, that it could have a huge impact on the way that we propose the CIP. So, we'd like to park that for that night. Plus, I think we're going to need the time anyway, we're talking about this stuff. And then, what we would do that night, we would do wrap-up and final decisions. Not to say that certain decisions can't be made as we go along the way, so I just want to say that. One thing I meant to kick it off with is to say this. You know, staff has put nine months into this, and tonight it does move to you. So, if you want to go a different route, if you want to stop and talk about something that, you know, maybe we're not, then this is where you get to do that, and this is where you should do that. We have three hours tonight, and I think we have three hours to the next, August 20th, as well. We haven't always needed all six hours, but the amount of time we need is really up to council. So, we thought what we would do, and this is what we did last year, is we would start with the budget memo, and just go page by page. There's a question, fine. We stop. If not, we keep on going. And then, when we get to some of those bigger topics, then I think that's where we will pause for a while, and then have a conversation about it. So, is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes. You have an "okay" idea.
All right. So, what did I do? Sorry, this was supposed to say, I was going to say, and so, I was going to say...
I think myself, because you're not live.
Wow, that's awesome.
All right, so tonight we'll start with top pages, 1 through 27, and then we'll go to 33 and 37. So, I want to make mention, we did with you guys, new pages, 1 and 2. That is only so that we can have the actual rigor in Sapphire Bay, so we wanted to make sure that you have that. So, just like I said, are there any questions about page 1?
I have a question about page 0.
Page 0, all right.
You've got to start us off, right?
All right. I'm looking for it. I haven't seen page 2.
The very first page is...
The legal cover.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, got it.
I'm trying to get my pen, sorry. So, I just, I think we're wording, and you may have to use this wording.
We do. This wording is as mandated by the state.
But it's just very convoluted. It's confusing, because the wording is not... The wording is not accurate.
Do you need to use that?
No. We're trying to move along with it. Thank you. So, because there's been questions about this phrasing, I wanted to make sure everybody understood what this paragraph means. Okay? So, it says, "The budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by 3.4 million." I'm going to talk about the 9.8%. It says, "More 9.8%." And of that amount, 1.5 million is tax revenue due to raise from new property added to the tax rule issue. So, every piece of that paragraph is mandated in language?
Absolutely. This state literally gives us, here's the paragraph, insert numbers here.
Okay. What I have a huge problem with is it says, "Property taxes are increased by 9.8%," and that is not accurate.
No, it's not.
It's assessed value year-over-year on our total tax roll, not the amount of property taxes we're collecting, not the percentage of our general fund budget, not the percentage of our total budget. It is assessed value last year to assessed value this year before any ceilings, caps, all that stuff, and that's the percentage increase. But we can't control how we say that, because we're required to say it like this.
So, Mayor, you bring up a good point. So, the last few years, we've had to have this phrase in there, and I think every session has changed the language. So, we're expecting it to change again next year because of Senate Bill 2. So, don't know what it will look like yet. But this is absolutely right. You know, what the state is really trying to do, it is convoluted, but what the state really is trying to do is to acknowledge that no matter what tax rate you set, you know, are you really going to collect more revenue than the year before? And the answer very clearly is yes.
I don't have a problem with their disclosure on the amounts. The percentage and the language with the percentages totally get accurate. They need some CPAs down in Boston. Just saying.
I agree.
Could you add a fluid explanation underneath it?
We actually asked that a few years ago, and I thought I had remembered that this page cannot be touched in any other way.
You're correct. This is the...
But what we could do, have done, is somewhere in the budget memo, or maybe even on the very next page, explain that. And I think that's, that may be a good way to have it.
I got it.
All right. So, on to page 1 there.
Thank you.
And one of the things that maybe I've heard coming around that's added to the cover for SB 2 is the state claiming, and this property tax increases is no way associated with the state of Texas legislature. That's the rumor that I've heard about it, that they want to push themselves and say, you know what, the legislature has nothing to do in increasing these taxes. That's the rumor that I've heard.
That's a rumor.
Senate Bill 2.
Any questions on page 4? Any question on the new page, too, to show the...
I have a question on page 7. What do you think of that?
Not going to move you all too fast, just so. I do want to acknowledge on page 3, you know, each year, there's, you know, the city achieves some sort of standards or a new award. I just want to acknowledge the fact that the 2019 Raleigh became the eighth fastest-growing city in the United States by the U.S. Census Bureau, a certified scenic city by the City of Texas, or in one of the 10 great small towns in retirement by U.S. News and World on Record. I thought that was very significant, so just wanted to pass that on. All right, page 4. So, one thing that's different about this year is that we're starting off with our budget priorities and highlights, and so, we thought it would be a little good if we could tie down some of the proposed changes in the budget to the actual strategic priorities. I do want to acknowledge the fact, and believe me, staff brought this up to me several times, even up to the time we were about to publish, is that there are some that could fit in a couple of different places, okay? So, when we talk about the wet zone, it could be all part of, you know, enhancing our, you know, our quality of life, but it also can be facilities, so therefore, we promote operational investment or investment in infrastructure and transportation. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that there are, there is some subjectivity in there. What I like to do in this part is just kind of hit some of the highlights. So, page 4, government transparently and closely. We are proposing a couple of different things in here. One, which will be discussed a little bit later in more detail, which affects the utility rates. We are proposing to lower the rates this year. We have some anticipation that with the proposed strategy on capital investment, we can do that, which reduces our amount of operating cash we have to spend each year, while at the same time, building was to invest in capital in the future. We also are proposing a priority-based budgeting software and an interim. I want to tell you that, you know, when you're evaluating all the strategic priorities or all the requests against those priorities, you know, we had over $5 million in due requests. And guys, that's not the CIP. The CIP, we literally have tens and tens of millions of dollars in requests. But I do want to acknowledge the fact that this decision for us was strategic in the sense that we feel like under Senate Bill 2, we're going to have to do it differently. This is, this is an incremental budget. This process really is. You know, there are other methods. Zero-based budgeting is one that comes to mind, performance-based budgeting. But we have fallen in love with this priority-based budgeting software. It is a booger, and without the software, we'd not want to do it. You know, it's not a skill-level thing, it just is sheer volume of information. So, I want to point out the fact that, you know, it would, I believe it would help our city make better decisions in the future about how we allocate our dollars, you know, so that it most closely aligns with our strategic plan. So, that was the reason I wanted to bring that up. Under insurance aid community, there's a couple of things that we're doing here. Obviously, there's, you know, new bond money to continue to build, rebuild Fire Station Number 2. The other thing is, we're adding five new police officers. We're proposing. I want you to know, our chief asks for eight. I really try hard to get eight in here, and the time that we did this budget proposal just felt like I could not get those eight in here. But I do have five. I have identified some areas that we can discuss, so that we can try to get some additional officers. But I wanted to make sure that you guys had, that we had as many as we can get in there physically. I also want to point out the fact that it really is driven, for me, about response time. Because I'll say this, a big argument cities make each year, regardless of what you're doing, and I go back to the $5 million in requests, is that, you know, growth is here. We're having more people in the city. We're, more people moving here, more businesses to cover fire and police. But if response times are not changing, then you are, in essence, absorbing that impact, that capacity. But when response times, particularly the priority one call, change, it is a cause for alarm. It is something that we have to pause and try to examine why that's happening. I can remember a number of years ago, when Dart and PGT were being built in this community at the same time. You couldn't go north across the railroad tracks anywhere in the city, Dexham, Raleigh Road, or Liberty Road. You also couldn't really go east and west. It was nearly impossible to go from one direction in this town to another, and our response times reflected that. The point I want to make today is that those are open, and in some respects, actually help expedite our response time. But we have to remember that we have more senior facilities, which become hotspots for EMS, or EMS room. We have more population, which then call for all kinds of help. We have more businesses that we've got to cover and be there when they have an issue, whether it's shoplifting and whatever. So, it's a big issue, and when we start to see those numbers creep up, it's a cause for alarm. The other couple of things that we're doing, we're proposing a part-time program for CID for Criminal Investigation Division. Bullet-resistant glass for municipal court. We're trying to decide between bulletproof or bullet resistant. It's certainly worth this consideration and discussion. If we were to build a whole new facility, you would not be able to report with that many windows, just to say that. Replacement locker gear and two medic units. Now, this is a million-dollar ask, but I do want to say this, we actually have funded this in the past with lease proceeds, so capital leases. We're proposing to do that again this year. So, in the sense that you have your 200, roughly $200,000 already built into your base budget for capital leases funds this request. So, our idea is that, you know, we want to cash out when we buy police cars and other things that we're going to use on a regular basis. But, you know, for these big, for fire trucks and these paramedic units, and these big, expensive items, you know, I think it's perfectly fine to continue with having a niche strategy. We not, you've got to come up with a lot more cash, and so, I just wanted to mention that. We're also recommending to fully fund the Emergency Management Coordinator. For several years now, we've been able to get half that position funded by grants. It's a critical position. We cannot lose it. I think it was, you know, when we think about these storms, it gives me a lot of comfort to know that we have people down at our Fire Station Number 1, ready to go to DOC when we have a bad storm. And just to acknowledge the night that we had to come in here, get, our people were there and they were ready. So, we want to fund that and reduce that reliance on grant funding in the future, although there's still a lot of grants we want to continue to apply for, for equipment and those components.
Are we going to continue to apply for this grant?
Well, we don't want to rely on it, is what I'm saying. We certainly can apply for it. We certainly would love to apply for some additional equipment as well. We just don't want to rely on it entirely.
The grant that funded this is being repurposed, so we won't be able to apply for it.
Okay, thank you.
Strengthen neighborhoods of the building. You know, the biggest projects, obviously, are the huge neighborhood improvements that we're doing, all the streets, you know, and when we go in there and replace these streets and reconstruct them, we're also taking care of grants, we're taking care of utility line. Curly gutter, so a lot of these neighborhood works, Lake Country Estates, Dowark Estates, some of those, huge boost of funding for that. Two and a half million dollars for alley improvements as well, which touches a lot of places all over the city. And then, we are proposing to update the Raleigh Development Code. That's a natural progression after the comp plan, something that the city has been doing. And then, we are proposing funding for a downtown parking plan for $25,000 as well.
Can we talk about that first?
Yep.
Because this goes back along with, what's the thought behind it? What's the hope to get out of it? How far in the future does it go? Is it...
The parking plan. The parking plan. If there wants to...
Exactly. You have a meeting in the middle.
No.
Well...
No. You know.
So, the parking management plan, once I started here, it was brought to my attention that we were very keen on understanding if indeed we had some issues related to vehicular parking, as well as, you know, what do we get to do with our downtown regulating plan? How does it tie in with our infrastructure improvements? And then, what are the implications as it relates to circus parking, other parking options, and then pedestrian accessibility associated with it as well? Based on that, based on current trends, as we move forward with the RDC, hopeful amendments to the RDC, this would tie in really well with the downtown regulating plan as well and determine, as we start now rebuilding and building downtown, this would be a good opportunity to start looking into this and having some options available for parking, or assessing if there indeed is a need or a deficiency in parking.
And that, for me, a main motivator for including this year versus say next year is that, you know, we have, you know, we know Stanley, what the work that they're going to do. We're going to lose parking that way when they end up doing this project, and it's going to attract more detractors across the street with the cotton gent as well, when that gets developed. You're going to end up taking away some of the areas where I think we're having some parking. We're just trying to do it for planning purposes, and to better understand when we need to make additional investments. The other thing is, just got to say that we are year by year on our temporary parking over there, what we're supposed to be maybe a year or two, we are continuing, because we know that it is having an impact, and if we didn't have that site, then you're going to fill up more parking places here in downtown.
How much is that site a year?
Jim, over here.
Yeah, right at 10,000, not the least.
And that's why it's the cheap thing for us to get right there.
My question on that, too, is, does this include, if they look into industry traffic for downtown, and how that plays in with downtown?
So, we worked on some potential scope of works that we wanted to see the appetite and what's out there in terms of what consultants we could use who have these skill sets with them, and we can definitely, I don't believe the current scope of work does explicitly discuss pedestrian traffic, but because it is downtown, we will be in a position to determine the walkability aspects, the transit aspects, and then determine what is out there and what our opportunities are.
I don't know. I mean, this budget's got, you know, there's a lot of needs there, and we don't know, and, you know, there's things that I think we all know we're going to want to be able to do, and we're going to spend $25,000 on a parking plan. It's going to say, yeah, you don't have enough parking, but it's a transit-oriented development. You don't have enough parking, but you've got a whole bunch of parking spots over here. And as you continue to grow, you know you're going to need this. It's a lot of money or something. That's a very obvious answer. And, you know, if it's one thing, if it's a political thing, because there's a lot of questions about that, if it's more of an educational thing, you know, I'd rather spend $25,000 into finding a solution in terms of educating people in terms of where you can park, if you got it. And the evening, you got to have over 100, 400 parking spots over in Dartmouth, it's a short walk, where people want to walk. They want to park right in front. We're never going to have that. It's a transit-oriented development. And so, I'm just trying to justify, I mean, I'm not saying that it's something that's not needed, but when I look at one of the other resources that are in here, $25,000 is a lot for a parking plan, it's going to come back and say...
You need more parking.
You need more parking. You know, I like the word "like" was in terms of, you know, people moving in and stuff like that, that it's going to go into how we've leaned new progress park, and how that's all going to combine, too, and how that piece of it, you know, that kind of starts to have something to it, that maybe some of that be included into the design for that. I don't know. Just having a hard time justifying it in my head. I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are on that one. When I saw it, I was like...
Can we put it on an iffy list to be considered at the end?
I would be happy to do that.
Jim wants to do a plug for the...
You want to make your...
No, I just, I think from a staff perspective, one of the things that we felt was important about it is, it allows us to develop a plan strategically, we can look at as development occurs in downtown, knowing that it's going to be a multi-year process, that we know what the triggers are on when we need to start to implement, you know, whether it's education, additional parking, when the parking, the potential parking garage may need to be started, those types of things. So, that's, I think, from a staff perspective, what we felt the need, you know, I think it's obvious that there's going to be a need for additional parking downtown. It's just a timing element, being able to identify those triggers.
And I can understand that, and I think here, it's actually a professional probably going to be a parking, because it's not going to, we're not going to change parking requirements in downtown, again, it's a transit-oriented development. But we're not going to be in a parking structure for years and years and years, nor is the money going to be there to pay for it for years and years and years. So, whether I know what that trigger is this year versus next year, I don't think is a big difference. That's just my, I agree with you, it's there, but how soon we really need it.
So, Mayor, we started...
Ify list? That very professional legal term.
Yeah. So, on page 6, I think it's quality of life. Obviously, the big story is service park, and starting the improvements there. We've also got our funding, funding, I should say, for Lake Front and Comp Road. Improvements to the wet zone, that's both a bond project and some additional money for capital maintenance for some renovation that you do inside some of the facilities. Full-time maintenance specialists, too, for the Parks Division, completing improvements to the water view golf courts. Now, guys, this, if you remember the way the bond was set up, is that we were going to do $20 million each year, but in terms of funding for the golf course, we knew that this bond would come in before we finished paying for that. And so, last year, there was also the amount of money that we could do that to keep the tax exempt. Do you remember that conversation? So, we couldn't sell all of the bond improvements for the golf course last year, last summer. We had to do some of it last year, some of this, but the whole project's still going down.
What's that actually, $150,000?
Yeah. That's what, $150,000. We're not doing an additional $150,000. It's all a part of the original 1.1 billion.
That's still $100,000.
Okay. Try again. So, what, last year, there was a dollar amount that we were limited in being able to issue last summer for the improvements. We could not issue all $1.1 million and protect the tax exempt status of the bonds. We discussed that with council and the Congress. So, what we done, what we did is that we did like $900,000, and then we did the other $150,000 this year, but we knew from a spending perspective, it would not cause an issue by selling the bonds that way.
Okay, so, let me just check out this. So, this is, this is part of the bond? $150,000 is part of the bond process?
It's not actually.
I thought it was, I thought it was M and L.
We also have some design costs in there for Environmental Learning Center. Again, that's coming from the bond funds. We are increasing hours for library assistant, help with clerical support, and for some of our programs, that also, that's actual operations. And then, what we, what we're proposing to do, the Arts and Management Commission requested $50,000 for spell parts and sculpture again. We really felt like it was really important to designate a portion of that for maintenance. There needs to be a maintenance plan. You know, these sculptures need to be cared for, and there's, quite frankly, some costs that are going to be involved in that. You know, that would be one thing, when you only just had one or two things, but now we're starting to add more every year. We need a budget for it. Rather than add to the budget, I am proposing to provide $40,000 to Arts and Management for new sculptures, and $10,000 for...
But, you know, it's hard to know when to talk about these things and how to put them on a list or whatever. You know, we can wait till the end and go, you know, should we take the $25,000 out for the parking plan, or should we put it on the iffy list now or not? I want to talk about, if this is the year we should be allocating $40,000 to a sculpture program with public safety needs. So, I don't necessarily want to call it ify, because I don't want to be crucified yet. Maybe crucified later, but I think we have to discuss it, and I think we have to prioritize it to other things. I think the maintenance is something we have to do, because we've already got the sculptures in place, but I would like to reconsider the $40,000 allocation at some point in this macro discussion.
I just wanted to ask a question about the maintenance. Does that also include cleaning up all the stone structures that we have, like the clock tower, and the ones at the entrances to the city? Is it all?
No, well, we, it's not the monuments. I think that's what you're asking about. That really is more of an operational issue. The sculpture, we have never cut, we have not done the kind of maintenance we need to do on that. And we're recognizing, and I think, Angie could probably help with, you know...
So, these are just the metal sculptures that are...
Anything else on page 6? On page 7, the gas and transportation...
I stopped you for a second.
I'm sorry.
No, you can do anything. The full-time maintenance specialist, too, for the Parks Division, for $49,000. I think that was part of the allocation we did.
We fully funded that. We skipped one year, if you'll remember. We were going to do two per year to get six. We skipped a year, and then we ended up funding the last one, the last year.
Last year.
Yeah. So, this is an additional request? Do you want to touch on that?
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this.
So, Parks and Recreation, our Parks team has four crews. They have a custodial crew that provides seven-day-a-week service to all the parks, and do special projects and special events. So, anytime we have a special event, anytime we have a state tournament on a weekend or a tournament on a weekend, our custodial crew comes in and assists our regular crew that tends to work Monday through Friday in ensuring that happens. Last year, we funded the crew leader for that custodial crew to ensure they had what they needed. This is funding that second position for that crew. We have gone to a system where we have a crew leader, we have a PMS 2 on each crew, and then we have PMS 1. Puts us more in line with the same kind of structure that public work chooses with their crews, and allows teams to be able to take a crew leader and a PMS 1 and go do a job, or a PMS 2 and a PMS 1 and go complete a project. And so, this would fully staff that custodial crew that does the seven-day-a-week service.
So, how are you staffing this today?
Today, it is a crew leader and PMS 1s. Two PMS 1s. They work four 10s, so they have a rotating schedule, so that they can do the seven-day-a-week service.
But, Angie, also, maybe I missed it, but also, you mentioned about the new territory you've had to cover.
Right. So, I mean, imagine that we've added Scenic Point Park and the custodial services there. They have added the new restrooms at K V, and the new restrooms that are going on at Community, going online at Community within the next two weeks, then the restrooms that will go at Shorewood and at Lakeside Park. So, that's one of the challenges, is just ensuring those things can't only get cleaned Monday through Friday, and then trying to rotate them. Right now, my crew leader is literally having to work every... Right now, my crew leader is literally having to work every single weekend. And so this would divvy up that responsibility a little bit. Those crews work four tens, so I would have four 10-hour days, instead of five 8-hour days. And so that way, I would have a leader of some kind on staff, seven days a week.
So, can I ask the question, you answer it, but I'm not getting what I'm trying to get to? You have this need today, and you're staffing it somehow. Is it with overtime?
We don't, right now, what happens is Juan comes in every day he can, and he flexes out the other time. So if I have a state tournament, he might be gone on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Carrie or Jonathan will go out and make sure that crew gets started and goes where they need. So I'm backfilling with a supervisor or an operations manager, ensuring that that team is where they need to be when they need to be.
Okay, so, other services, other programs are not being serviced because those other employees are doing a job that's not their job? Is that what I'm hearing?
More or less, yes. So the park supervisor, instead of being in the field overseeing all of his team, he has 15, will have to start his day with our custodial crew, and make sure they have the direction they need to go out and work their 10-hour shift. Where with a crew leader, then I have somebody right there with them that can make sure everything is getting done the way it needs to get done. It's quality assurance as much as anything. But it just takes away from my supervisor position. He has to be in the field overseeing everything, plus some of our CIP stuff, or if, you know, he's tied up on a job site, then the operations manager is out of the office, so.
What Angie is explaining, an organizational structure that she felt was really important. But the issue I don't wanna do aside with is that the amount of space we're responsible for is growing. And this is one of the things prompting her to do that, to make sure she's got adequate coverage. Because where they're filling in, as you said, Mayor, the gap, is it's taking capacity out of other folks that need to be doing other jobs. And that's consistent with a lot of our departments, and we continue to grow.
Yeah, and I'm not discounting or checking the need for all that, but we, as we saw, we had lots of departments asking for lots of new positions. So we've gotta dissect every single one of these, and make sure we're making the right decisions for the city and the overall organization. So just trying to understand.
These staff also help with special events. So if there's a Neighborhood Life party, this team is the one that makes sure that the Neighborhood Life trailer gets where it needs to get. This team makes sure the special event trailer gets where it needs to get if we're having something downtown on a Saturday, and they need that. So that's really, it just starts to, adding her for the, adding Lake Turnip Congrove, adding over the next, additional ball fields, tournaments. We're really trying to do a lot of tournaments out at Community Park. All of that adds to the load of this team, and that's why that position is so good.
On page seven, invest in transportation and infrastructure. We are, of course, got $4.1 million to expand Middle Road, the railroad tracks to Dow Rock Road. $1.9 million to buy Cheesa Road from Dow Rock to Middle Road. Those are all a lot of projects that are in there. We've also added right tournaments in this latest location, so we have a plan for that. Now, I included, as I mentioned earlier, $2.5 million. Trail assessment, $1.1 million. Again, this is bond money, and then $5 million in water too. So that was issued this summer as well.
Would it be possible that we clarify what is bond, what is funded through bond, and what's not funded through bond? So that is clarified for public readiness?
Um, and it's not just coming out of the, Okay, so, you're talking about tonight, or are you talking about to do that, or?
He's just talking about in this budget memo.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Yeah, I,
I mean, it's a little bit easy, it's a little bit easy for us to figure it out, because we're so close to it. I was confused by the $150,000 to Water View. But, you know, people with less experience on what's going on here, it's hard to figure out. This is bond funds, this is operating funds.
So it looks like it's, it's, it's me, I mean, so we're getting a little operational, and,
Yeah, there is some budget.
It's the budget, not just part of the budget.
Well, you know, it's all important, you know, we're talking about strategic priorities, and how are we meeting these strategic priorities? I like that you put vote in, I just think it's hard to understand what's coming out what.
And then this is a perfect example, because unless you dive down, I don't, this may not be the time to do it again, Tim's one, we're gonna dive into this, but, you know, on the alley, so far, alley funding strategy, right now, we've got $800,000 that we're putting into pavement maintenance. And everybody knows here that I do not like alleys. And we need five police officers, we need races, we're gonna spend $800,000 on pavement for alleys. We're gonna talk about our funding strategy when we get to the capital improvement stuff. And maybe this is a question for tomorrow night, in terms of shifting more of that maintenance over into stuff that's gonna pay for it for the long term. We're paying $800,000 a year, almost a million dollars a year, for maintenance improvements in alleys that affects a very small percentage of the population. And I think that's a debate we need to have.
Not, not small, 60%, 60% of all of our residents have alleys.
60% have alleys.
Not 100%, I understand.
But what also, what percentage of that 60% get affected by the $800,000 that we're gonna spend on maintenance improvements? That, and I understand that third of the streets, to keep our good streets good.
I think,
I don't know, I mean, that's a discussion that I might,
Yeah, and, I don't know where you're gonna be from, but I'm gonna be here.
I mean, next time. Thank you. So I might be here either, hopefully.
So one of the things with the $800,000 is, that's how much we're collecting annually from the monthly charge on our utility billing. So it is designated to pavement improvements. So if we're gonna do something with that, that's the, that's how you have to undo that, not allocate that $800,000 in another manner, because we've already designated that for that purpose when we have built our whole customer base. So, there's no, there's nothing wrong with discussing total funding allocated to alleys, and if there's room there, but the $800,000 is earmarked. And our city attorney would have a little bit of a concern if we were to allocate those funds somewhere else. Those specific funds. So find some other alley out. And, and the monthly charge on the utility bill is what per month?
To get the $800,000.
For resident, for household? Not for resident, for household? It's $2?
Well, we have somebody who will fund it.
Yeah, I'll find you. So, not this last, not this last strategic session, but the strategic session before, we had a very long discussion about whether to keep that place or not, and the vote was 6-1 to keep it in place. I voted against it. Because I wanted capital funding to come out of capital funding, not out of monthly billings to residents. Not that I didn't think the alleys needed that funding. That was determined at that time, so that would have to be brought up in another manner to change that.
But that's coming to everybody's bank account?
Every household.
Every household.
But in 40%.
It is pavement maintenance. It's not alley maintenance. But that's a discussion for another time.
Tax law.
Another reason I voted against it. But, the reality is, you lose $800,000 in funding for alleys, you're taking a huge hit.
No, I don't wanna lose $800,000 for alleys. I wanna make sure who has alleys is paying for it. So I shouldn't, I don't have an alley, so I shouldn't be paying for alleys. I don't mind paying for streets. Because somebody that has an alley, if they want alley, that they want, they should be paying double.
And we've, we've had that discussion too. And we can have it again.
Now, let's get through this first.
Yeah. But the attorney needs to be in the room when we have this discussion.
Go ahead, I understand that.
Um, under promote operational excellence, we have, obviously, our unpaid plan that we've got in here, $800,000 for that, it's definitely increases. There's a place later in this document where there's a lot of details, I'd like to pause there, rather than here. We are proposing an IT manager to help with our city's critical IT infrastructures, to manage those projects, as well as funding to boost cybersecurity. I do wanna just kinda get on this just a little bit. We'll be met with our stakeholders, which we do a couple, few times a year. One thing I mentioned on cybersecurity, in this past year, really, in recent months, four different cities across the country have had the ransomware. Two of those cities, Atlanta, Georgia, and Baltimore, Maryland, have spent millions and millions of dollars. One spent $16 million, another $12,000, just trying to recover from damage. Two other cities, I believe, from Florida, either roughly our size, maybe a little bit bigger, they ended up basically paying the ransom. And I know the US Conference of Mayors has approved a resolution that would recommend that they do not pay that ransom, because nobody paid it, and it would be something that would stop. Most recently, in the past two weeks, I think it was, there was a city that got hit, or county, excuse me, a county that was hit, where they were sent a, you know, a thing that appeared to be legitimate from a vendor, and says, please make your payments in the future to this account, and they did. $2.5 million, I think they got back some of that somehow, I'm not exactly sure how. But my point is that this is constant every day. There are times Joey will show us just what he been, kind of what our firewall has been hit in any given day. And it's security numbers out there. And I don't mind saying it, because this is, it is life. About seven or eight years ago, Rallent got hit with ransomware too. And for us, thank goodness, if we were able to restore from a uncorrupted backup data disk, because we had that, we had not had it, we would've been like Atlanta, trying to rebuild systems and infrastructure. But it's still, it put us down for about a week until we could rebuild and get back up and running. And just a few months later, we got hit again. But because we've gone through the exercise, took us on about three days to get out. We don't want to lose those three days, we don't wanna get hit again. And quite frankly, there is a lot more serious stuff that's going on out there. I buy stuff from Target. I have, my information was compromised, what was it, Christmas before last? Almost every day, Capital One or somebody. So if those folks who really, you would think have a high degree of expertise just in this area, if they're being hit, even at the federal level, then you have to understand cities are extremely vulnerable, and they're considered soft targets. We are proposing to boost this, funding for this. And I think this is, is time to do this, and I think that we need to be doing more in the future as well.
Payment maintenance needs $3 per house?
Per month. Per household, per month. Thank you.
We also wanna replace network rattle and refresh UPS system for the police department. These are, this is equipment, hard equipment. We did replace these a number of years ago, time to do it again. There's a number of building improvements and renovations, carpet, and various different buildings, and paint, foundation work we need to do. We use the grid and cross in the annex a lot, I mean, a lot of people do. We call it the annex conference room. We have council meetings, work sessions there, particularly when P and Z is meeting. And, you know, you can tell how that corner of the building is just, the slab is just absolutely broken, so that's gotta be replaced or fixed. That's happened to the building next to us where HR is. They've actually floated that a couple times over the last, well, years or so. You know, it's gotta be done.
I have a question. So I noticed the RCC carpet replacement was $22,000, and the NX was $40,000. Is that just because the amount of carpet or type of? It's the area.
The area.
The RCC is just, it's just straight floor. I think they're gonna want to use those squares, right? So that,
We're gonna go back with a different type of board.
But over here, all those cubicles, it's a lot of work to do.
Huh? The question, the power station two, huh? Do you know what we're planning on doing?
The bay doors. So, so they have, just like we have the garage doors, they have the same issue. So what we're wanting to replace is the back of the unit that is in there for these two stations. But eventually, we're gonna have to do it for one and four as well. But those are newest stations, and so those are still operating pretty well.
Just wondering, since we're gonna be building a new power station for abandoned in this building?
We need to do that for, they're there for, they're there for.
What was the animal shelter, the area of, what was gonna happen there?
Yes, so, Noel, you wanna talk about the $100,000 for the animal shelter?
Yes, the Animal Services Building is in need of, not just the face of, but this component within the building itself. We have to create a customer-centric frontline for our customers, and we need to have dedicated office space. We also have the seating tiles that need to be replaced that have been damaged. We also, so what we've done is we've used a three, a four-point approach. The first was to change the, which we've already taken care of, was to replace the outdoor run mulch with turf. The second approach is to actually go in and remodel, and rework, sanitize the interior front face of the building and office area. And then phase two and three will be the indoor dog kennels, and hopefully use some other additional work to secure the building.
The 100 just covers the first phase?
The 100 will hopefully just, will eat by and cover the first phase, yes.
What do you mean? She asked for 200 originally.
200, and that covered all phases?
Um, almost all phases, yes.
Public Works is also asking for,
I just wanna say something about that. You know, we hate throwing money into facilities that we're gonna replace, but it's, we're still several years away from that Animal Services Building. I'm trying to get the new name, I'm such a, and it has been neglected for many, many, many years. Sorry, Secretary of Defense.
Public Works is asking for a full-time facility, that covers the additional space. We have a new building that we're trying to cover, plus just an additional care. Gary, you wanna touch on that?
Yeah, so, 2016, we had $139,000 square feet, and the new addition to the Cole House, and we're developing the service building for the $146,000, $150,000 square feet. And the industry standard for average custodial staff is a, a member crew to do that new square feet. We're doing four full-time and two part-time. So we're asking for, not only a full-time person for custodial work that's gonna free up our maintenance staff, who is doing cleaning as well, he is building. So it's, it's concentrated on doing the small paint jobs, repairing around the city, just performing custodial work. So we're asking for this position to free up that position's time, and get more in line with the square foot of the person.
Still way below the industry average?
Yes.
You keep the two part-time?
The part, yes, we,
So you have to find full-time, two part-time?
Correct.
And the standard would be eight full-time?
It would be eight. And we're after the square foot for a government facility, yes.
Thank you.
I do wanna note this with all our top employees to interpret their request, because it directly impacts not only our customer, but also our employees. And then, we're also proposing to upgrade the rider position to full-time. We did have a part-time position that we hired early in the year, and that person ended up being employed for a year. So that happens, and they get it. We're, we see it as a potential, and just in a short time that that person was there, there's just so many opportunities they identify. Quite frankly, that we're not working on those properties right now, or those opportunities, I should say. You know, we need somebody focused on that, and somebody that is working with our team, identifying those opportunities, getting us geared up so you can apply and justify those lines. I see this, again, same conversation we had last summer about part-time. This is, this, in my mind, is a position that pays for itself. You may not always get administrative funds to really cover, truly cover that cost, but in terms of the capital, and that we can get from that, it's just huge. And that's one of the reasons we're working there in that position.
Noel, were you trying to raise your hand?
No.
Okay. Watch that card going up, for auction card. I wanna, I wanna have a discussion about the internal audit position. You know, we allocated probably 60 last year, which means you have another 60 allocated for this next fiscal year. I just wanna put it on the list, wanna talk about it at the end. Unless somebody wants to talk about it now. There's a lot of priorities.
All right, page eight is, and the fourth half of page nine is really just kinda summarizing some things out of the strategic plan. If council don't came with it, I'd like to kinda go into addressing what we consider to be the most important. be the most important authorities for 2019, starting with public safety. So it's interesting that we are where we are in public safety. You know, for several years now, Fire Chief has been tracking statistics that, that has really kind of proven out where EMS is going. So for example, Fire Station Number Four, we did not have an EMS unit in there for a lot of years. When the, when this was taken to the bond voters back in, I think, 2001, I got here in 2003, and I think it was already approved then. What we said was, we're going to build the station, we're going to outfit the, the fire engine, but we would wait to fill out the EMS when the demand was there. So there were a couple of things driving that demand. First, it was a, there's a, the ILA, we have a Garland, and you'll remember that that's based on roughly about 22,000 people, so you have to have one EMS and zero, and then when you hit 22, you've got to have the second one, so it's, it's kind of at the inter-level. Well, we're about to hit 66,000, and that triggers the fourth one. So that was why we did the grant last year, hire nine firefighters to help us be able to do that. And, and I want to make sure that, for my cheese sake, that I'm saying these are nine firefighters. So, but it is allowing us to build out the rest of Fire Station Number Four in terms of staff out, in, in terms of the medic unit. So, but in time, it wasn't just the paper, because of the agreement, the ILA that we have with Garland, it was also because we were starting to see the number of times that, that all of our units were tied up, whether on some kind of call or another, and Garland was being alerted that next call we get, we're going to need you guys to, to step in and help us, was starting to increase. And we were starting to track that number. I remember us talking about it a year before, we talked about it again last year, you know, Chief and I, we've had several conversations about it in the past year. So we, we think that adding the new nine firefighters from this grant is going to help us meet that need, the immediate need. Certainly isn't going to address what we're going to need to do down in Sapphire Bay. That's still a planning issue we've got to, to really start to explore. But just, even if Sapphire Bay ever happened, just what we need today in Rowlett, it was critical that we get that grant. And the city is going to save, over the three-year period, about a million and a half dollars, but it does mean that that check is coming due. And we're putting up 25% a year for the first couple of years, then we switch to 65%, then we're going to switch to 100. So at least in terms of response time, in terms of having, you know, the staffing level we need there, fire is, is, that is really how the fire. When we got into police and got into their response time on 41 call, we really started seeing a different story. And so, I, I can remember, we've had a lot of conversations with Chief Broadneck and with, with Paul, our, our city manager, how do we go about, you know, how, one, what is causing the, the response times to change? And the bigger issue was, for years, we have recorded the time that we were called out from the dispatch until the time we arrived. And when you look at it, that's very aggressive. I mean, we, we have a six-minute response time as a target, we're hitting four minutes and something, we're cruising on, we're there when you need us. But we started noticing that what was going on in dispatch when they started digging into the numbers, and then technology helps you do this. So one of the concerns that we had with that, when you start looking at the time that somebody makes a call until the time we're actually having boots on the ground, guys, that's not six minutes. That's, that's not six minutes. And it, and it was for 2016, and maybe it even was for 2017, but as we started going into 2018, we started to see ourselves out there longer on average per call, and then also in 2019, that, that continued. So what we were trying to figure out is what was driving that, and what we figured out was, it was, it was taking longer and longer for dispatchers to actually find an available officer that they can call out. So this became a huge issue for us. We started looking at the average calls, and one of the things we determined on that was that, you know, in 2016, we had an average time of about 55 minutes a call on 41. So remember, 41 is the worst kind of stuff that we can get, you know, it's the heart attack, it's the, it's the rage, it's the homicide. You know, homicide, you're not going to get out of there in 55 minutes. But, but on average, of all those kind of calls, that was the kind of things that we were seeing. In 2017, that number increased to an hour and a half, in 2018, to almost two hours on the average amount of time. So that means then, this isn't just technology. Yes, we, you know, we've had some new folks in dispatch, over time, they get more efficient with the way that they run through their calls, you know, that's going to happen any given year, that, that's not really the issue. But until we can drive down that average response time on 41 calls, we can't, excuse me, the average time spent on calls, we're not going to be able to reduce or change the average response time. So, you know, we, Chief asked for eight officers in this year, he's asking for, I think, 16 more in the future, but we felt like we really needed to address that in this year. Kind of just like what we had in the discussion with cybersecurity, this is one area we cannot get wrong, we need boots on the ground. So in Rowlett, every city is just a little bit different, but we're all struggling with the same things. Because we have shift work and we're a 24/7 operation, you can't just hire one cop and think, okay, we're good. Takes four police officers to put one boot on the ground 24/7 throughout the whole thing. Just like in the fire, because we have three shifts, you know, like on a paramedic unit, that's two people per shift, that's a minimum of six, not to mention just the coverage for vacations, sick leave, training, and all the other issues. So for police, when, when Chief Broadneck requested eight officers, he really is talking about having, adding two to shift work. So that means that we have a planned staffing, I believe, Chief is 11, or is it? What's our planned staffing? 10 right now. 10. So what it's scheduled, we have 10 officers onboard, but that's not really what happens because somebody is always out for circulating or vacation or training. So we have a minimum shift, I think it's at, with 11, Chief, then it's nine for minimum, or is it 10 later? 10, 10, 10. All right. So eight officers is minimum. When we drop below eight, we bring back on people on overtime. Firehead does the same thing, there's a minimum level of staffing they do, but if they drop below that, they bring people back on overtime. Overtime's not an efficient way to do business. It is when, when it's a capacity issue that can be easily filled, but when you're relying on overtime to make that coverage, or to cover that capacity, then, then it's not, it's not going to work overtime. So we believe that hiring the additional officers may have an impact on overtime, but it's not dollar for dollar. So just, just to get two more boots on the ground, will take eight officers. As I mentioned earlier, we got five in the budget. I really wanted to try to get all eight in there, that, I think that that was the right 40 for this year, and I think this is a bigger deal on strategic 40s than it is.
So I want to say something about the nine firemen. You know, there were, there was discussion during the strategic planning session about lots of different needs and priorities for the budget, and one of them was to, you know, put a placeholder in that budget for 100% of the salary of the nine firefighters. And with the 3.5% cap looming, I'm very concerned about not having that placeholder in this budget, because all that's doing is kicking the can down the road and can put us in a position, you know, this year we got to fund 25%, next year we have to fund 25%, the following year we have to fund 60%?
65%.
65%. Following year, we have to fund 100%. We can't be in a position as a city to go, you know, we, we put this whole, you know, these nine additional firefighters in place, and we, we staffed this, you know, additional unit, and two years down the road, we don't have the money to come up with 65%. And three years down the road, we don't have the money to come up with 100%. So I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have that allocated in this budget, and I know, Brian, you share that concern because it was a very high priority when you, the original budget discussions. So it has to, in my mind, be considered as an item that we're considering at the end of trying to figure out if we can fund that in some manner this year, because it's not going to come from, you know, nowhere, and, and next year, and the year after, and the year after.
Well, Mayor, to your point, this is the last year, the year coming up, 2020, is the last year of 25%.
Okay, so it's only one year away.
And, and the difference goes from right at 200,000 to just over 500, so it's a 300-some-thousand-dollar swing.
And the 2021 budget, you have to come up with 300,000.
300-some-thousand.
And the first year of the.
And all the year, another 300,000.
The first year of the 3.5% cap. So how can we tell our community, and how can we tell our firefighters that, you know, we're not going to have money to fund these nine firefighters next year, or 2021 budget? So I'm very concerned about that.
You know, and what we, what we said, Mayor, was that, kind of the strategy we were hoping to be utilized was to carve that out this year, and then just use it for one-time things, equipment and whatever else that we could use, so that, that money is a base then for the following year and the year out. So, but, but again, to fund the entire amount, we would jump from $200,000 a year to 870, so it's a $600,000 swing that we're pulling out of, you know, the budget today to set aside for that purpose.
Well, we pull, we definitely need to consider pulling out 300,000, which would be the extreme of 2020 budget and 2021 budget. Right?
We're going to have to do it anyway.
I have the impression that I must have missed something, I love sense that, that we already made that decision at the strategic plan.
There's just, so, so we had some priorities of strategic plan, meaning the city manager goes off and does his best shot at a budget, based on guidance that he gets from us and based on all these needs and priorities, we lose a big sales tax, take a big sales tax hit, our property tax assessments come in a lower, a little lower than expected, this is the budget as presented, now we got to figure out if, if we accept this, if we, if we change it a little bit. And I just didn't want to lose sight of that priority. Did I present that good enough to you?
I, Mayor, it is, and I think what would have happened, if that had not happened, with the sales tax issue, then one, I would have had eight officers in there, and then two, we would have, we would have funded that cost, and then we would have proposed to use it for one-time things for the next year or two until we have to fully fund it.
You know, I, I've had this discussion several times, though it's often leaked, but, you know, the cap, there's an 8% cap this year, this budget almost gets to the 8% cap, there's actually room for another penny. This budget doesn't propose getting to the cap, this budget proposes keeping the tax rate the same as the prior year. So there is that option of increasing the tax rate by a penny and still staying under the cap this year, I'm just talking about options. Every decision we make this year has huge implications for the future, and we're not alone in this, every city is in this situation. You know, next year, we can only go to the 3.5% cap, we go to 3.6, we go to 9%, 3.6%, whatever we go, automatically generates an election. So, you know, you can go to the voters and go, are you going to fund, let's say, this is all discussion focus, this guy's, let's say we fund five police officers this year, we can't fund all the.
Ambulance.
Everybody's positive.
Yeah, I have a couple of problems.
Everything's positive. You know, it's one thing to go to the voters next year and go, we have to fund these other three police officers, or we have to fund another eight police officers, or we have to fund, you know, these new fire positions. But it's, it's very hard to go to the voters and go, you know, we're going to have another $300,000 hit on these nine firefighters that go, are you having a place? Are you going to vote to, to go above the cap for positions we already have in place? That is kicking the can down the river. I'm very concerned about that.
I share your concern. And I don't think we're going to be the only city, I'm sorry, Brian, you know, I've read some of the articles out there, you know, some early budgets have started to come in, and there's a lot of them that are, Dallas alone is, is budget at 3% decrease proposed, so, you know, there's a lot of cities out there that are preparing for what Central City is going to do in the future.
Yeah, it's very interesting, we get a lot of articles, and I haven't seen one yet that is not maintaining or increasing their tax rate. Every single one is considering the most they can do this year to put them in a position for next year's cap, which is a real shame because that's not what the purpose of Central Two was.
It wasn't the intention of.
Yeah. So it's very interesting times.
Mayor, I'll say this, you know, we, we get those articles too, and, you know, of course, when a city is considering an increase, then it shows up in art, there are two cities, Dallas County, that have proposed a lower rate, just a handful, there are seven or eight that we know they're proposing increases, and I think you heard their neighbor next door, Garland is 6.5%. And then.
Cents.
Six cents, sorry.
The Garland, Garland's tax rate will be higher than Rowlett's.
And then.
We don't increase.
And then there's still, was about seven or eight that we don't know yet, because if we can't find it online, or it's not, you know, out there, or maybe they haven't had their budget meeting with their accounts just yet. So we don't know what's going to happen for those cities. It is kind of a thing, they all, all of them. So speaking of legislative things, it's kind of the same way you said with that. So as the mayor mentioned earlier, you know, there were a couple of hits this year, the biggest one obviously was the sales tax, which we'll discuss a little later. But, you know, even in the legislative session, so one is a time bomb for the future, and then another one is going to hit us starting in January. Now, I will tell you that when staff calculated the annual impact, about 110,000, I think, it is, it is useful to note that we calculated the entire annual effect, but actually, the law doesn't go into effect on January 1st. So there's a date that those cities have to notify the city, and then it goes into effect on January 1st. So we are going to get at least one quarter of payment under the old rule before it kicks in. So, you know, that's, you know, 20, 30,000 dollars, we, we'll make that, that'll be something we can do something with. But, but the other one that I just want to make sure that we're, you know, we don't lose sight of, is how it's going to be, because when we go into our facilities assessment, one of the things that the chief is going to have to do, about police chief, we're going to have to look at our, our space that we keep for our evidence and things like that. It's, you know, one of the changes that they made is that they're requiring local police agencies to reiterate evidence for rape cases for 40 years. You can't do that with the existing facilities, and all that has to be applied to them. So it's not like sticking that in the back of the warehouse or something. So when we get through these facilities assessment that we, we already started, I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to need some additional space in the future for that. So that's, that's a, that's the time bomb that, that will hit us if we don't know exactly when. There's a couple that are also impacting the way we do business, and I really appreciate how Nala and her team is taking on the shot clock requirement and the things that they're doing, because this one, this is for residential properties, so it's not really commercial, but it requires no more than a 30-day review for critical land development plans and site plans, you know, it's kind of, so, you know, once somebody submits their, their proposal, we have 30 days to approve it now. One of the things that people will tell you right now is that, you know, it took me 45 days to get it, or it took me longer than, say, 30 days or whatever, but it's because we try to work with them. So rather than just kicking it back and denying it, we try to tell them, hey, you know, we need these two documents, we need this, we don't have that. And so we kind of allow them to amend their, their plat, or site plan information over a period of time before we kind of really make a final decision. One thing that this will do is that we're going to have to have a harder cutoff, and at the time you submit your, your documents, if it's not all there, because of the 30-day shot clock, we're just going to have to deny it. And then we'll have to explain why. And then we'll have to explain why we deny it, that's also a major requirement. But then it does mean that, that they'll have to come back and they'll have to redo their, their plan. And that starts the time clock ticking all over again.
Did you say that applied to only residential?
Yeah, I think it's, the shot clock is residential, right?
The shot clock, there's two components to it, Brian. You're absolutely right, as it relates to replats and some residential replats, how we review plats and what the approvals go with it, there's parameters associated with that. However, any site plan or development plan, for whatever development, any simple plans have to be reviewed within that 30-day time period as well.
Including commercial?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's two house deals, right? I know one was in the back of my mind, residential.
Correct. Yes, you're correct, yes.
The biggest one, obviously, is Senate bill to, the mayor, the mayor got into that a minute ago, and that's the three and a half percent trigger. One thing I did want to mention on the fire, on Fire Station Number Four, is that, again, when that bond, when that election originally occurred, the election did specify to build the building and to hire the staff. So it may be one that does not require approval for us to be able to fully fund or to increase that funding in the future. But when you think about an election that's happened in 2001 or 2002, the public isn't going to feel that way 17, 18 years later. So it's a challenge we're going to have to face in terms of, you know, if we, if we try to do this because we can, or whether or not we still will try to work with the public on it. I'm just saying that that, that is out there.
No, you're not going to refuse to let that statement.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, at the time that the election occurred-
What election?
For Fire Station Number Four.
2015.
No, that was like 2002 or '01, or somewhere in that neighborhood.
Oh, I think a training center.
Yeah.
I think a training center, sorry.
So when that, that original election occurred-
18 years ago.
Yeah, it included the, to build the building and the staff. So, but that's 18 years ago. And so we're dealing with today, and our public, I'm sure, are going to want to know all the costs that it takes to operate the government. The three and a half percent is a huge issue. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it. I just, I just want to say that this is one of the reasons why I brought it up earlier in this conversation, is that we're, we're going to have to do some things differently. One, I believe we're going to have to move up the entire election cycle to, the budget cycle by at least a month. There is going to be a part of that budget cycle that is going to be an absolute whirlwind because by the time that, you know, we're trying to get it in front of you, we're going to be getting our final certified numbers. So we're going to have to do estimates by the end of now, but I'm just saying that we think it's going to trigger moving this up almost a whole month, meaning that you'll adopt the budget in August rather than adopt the budget in September.
And there's a bunch of certifications and qualifications that we'll have to do. So we do start to notice it now. That's an increase in the change in wording. And one of the challenges we'll have in 21 is we don't know what that word is here yet. And nobody does.
And then, you know, for this year, we give the $800,000 hit in sales tax, so that obviously had an impact in developing the proposed budget, particularly along with the changes in our operating budget down in Austin. I don't, I would rather skip the water and sewer because we're going to discuss that more in detail in another night, if the council is okay with that. If you want to talk about staffing, we're going to spend a little more time on that. Just again, we are, we have included in this proposed budget 11.25 employees. We have 27.25. We need to kind of go down that list, I have a slide on that, so we can kind of spend a little bit more time when we get to that page. Tax exemptions, just wanted to kind of hit the highlight on that, just to say again, you know, it is a huge impact. And we took a look at all the various different exemptions we have, homestead that are, say, $1.65. Some are $200 million. So $250,001 million just for those exemptions. And so when you really just nail that down to the actual, the impact of the exemption, and then you add the freeze on top of it, that's almost seven and a half cents on the tax rate. So if you look at cities that may not have the tax freeze and some things like that, then you see that it does have an absolute impact.
I have a request. Lot, can you gather, the cities that have tax freeze, can you gather information for us of what their exemption level is?
Sure, we can look it up.
Just the cities that have tax freeze, I want to know what their exemption levels are compared to ours.
Is there a specific exemption you're looking for, or like-
Anything that's subject to freeze.
Very good.
And the reason I bring that up is, lots of reasons I bring that up, but, you know, a lot of cities increase their senior tax exemption. They did it last year, they're doing it this year again, because the seniors are really suffering in regards to the increase in assessed valuation and not, the ability not to pay their taxes. And we have not done that last year, we're not proposing to do that this year. I don't want to compare apples to oranges, I want to compare apples to apples. A freeze locks those seniors in from the day they turn 60, somebody in their household that's underneath, jerk 65 forever. So, you know, we don't have the same issue in this community in regards to those seniors that are qualified for the senior tax exemption because all these huge increases in assessed value are not impacting them. But we do have the issue for new seniors rolling on to the freeze for the first time. So I just want to make sure we understand where the market's at, on an apples-to-apples comparison, not an apples-to-orange comparison.
We'll get that quick.
Thank you.
In terms of the property tax rate council, I just, I always like to add this a little bit of perspective. You know, you know, we talked about it a few minutes ago, you know, some cities making the changes that they're making. One cent on the tax rate costs the average taxpayer five cents a day, so nickel a day. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up. Because when you really look at what, what our taxpayers are paying on an average basis for RALAD taxes, not school, not everybody else, but just for the city of RALAD, is $4.15 a day and you have a taxable value of $200,000. And that's the same as a Starbucks coffee, a coffee latte, McDonald's Big Mac meal. But I love this one, the movie for one. So this summer, the grandkids were staying with us, and we took them to go see a movie. $16.44 just to want to help get into the movie theater. So, you know, people don't think a lot of times about buying Starbucks coffee or going to the movie. But, you know, my favorite story is this.
Is that?
Yeah. We have an ADT system at the house. I know, I shouldn't have said that, Joey, because, you know, that's cybersecurity, but, you know, we have a security system at the house. You know, it's a, it's a basic system, huh? But here's the issue, that alarm goes off, who are they going to call?
Those investors.
Those investors. So they're going to call 911. And the people who are going to actually come out and save the day is costing you $1.55. That's your insurance. You know, we all have to have car insurance and house insurance, and I understand that. But that's the people who are actually going to come to get something with the call, whether it's to save you from a heart attack, or, you know, to check on the bird, or whatever it is. $1.55 a day, and yet, that home security system is $1.93. And I think that's, that's-
So, so Brian, again, one penny equals what per day for households?
That's about $200,000 taxable value is a nickel a day.
And then how much is one penny in total dollars for the year for the city?
About five.
Five thirty-six.
Five thirty-six?
Five thirty-six. It grew last year, it was $4.90, so it was $846,000.
It changes. And Lot, I know that last year, the average home value in RALAD was about $193,000, if I'm remembering correctly off the top of my head. We rounded up to $200,000 for this, this ease of understanding. Have you calculated the average home value in RALAD this year?
Not yet. We get as far as certified values from the cap, but we haven't, if they're to get, but I can get that one out a little bit.
We would like, we would like to-
Yeah, Mayor, there, there, it's a very specific number we get from D.C. and R.C., and then we have to add that somehow. But I do want to point out, we did, we did notice, from the D.C. side, and very clear is one to $200,000. But it's why we use taxable value of $200,000. The other thing is, it's easy to do the math. So if you have a $250,000 taxable value, you can divide the 200 and then multiply by 2.5 and you're there. So it's a real easy way for people to get to what their number actually is.
That's why we rounded up to $200,000 last year, but I want to know what it is this year.
I'll pull that up for you, so.
So if you go to page 14, this is where I want to kind of start getting into a little bit of the numbers. So on that very first figure, 17, you can see that we had, and going back to page zero, as Mayor, $3.4 million increase in property tax revenue. There was some adjustments, net tax ceilings and exemptions, and then the portion of the bond sales is allocated to-
You want me to stop my line, or you want to-
No, that's fine. We can do it.
So it says loss due to tax ceilings and exemptions, and that is in addition, it's not a loss.
It actually was an improvement.
And it shouldn't say loss.
So, and it's, it's, it's technically, it's... The, the reason why it's a positive number is actually really interesting because Wendy and I were talking about it, is because the big driver of that is, is the cap on the home security system. So like, home security, you know, 10% a year, right? Our values, they don't go up 10%, so we, the amount of loss, we gained on that in comparison to last year, so that's why that number's a positive. That number is a delta from fiscal 19 to fiscal 28.
That makes sense, I just shouldn't say loss. Yep.
It should be a negative.
It should be gains.
It's a gain on the loss. And that probably looks technical when you-
It's a gain on loss. It's less loss.
It's less loss.
Okay. I tried to figure that out.
First user.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
The other thing, the next thing on the Geo bond setup, so the annual debt service is, I think the first year is like right at $1 million, but just to note, so we had about almost $400,000 drop off from our bond schedule, so that freed up $362,000 for that. And then out of new growth, then we're taking $592,000. So that's how we funded that. The TURs increase for Bayside and in the future for Sapphire Bay and the Villa de Ralad, that was a $261,000 increase, which then reduces the amount because that's going into a different pot. And then there were just-
VOR.
Say again, Villa de Ralad. So that gave us a starting point in really about 2.5 million, because all the other stuff, until you take that into account, there's nothing that we can do with operations. We had the sales tax issue we mentioned, and the, the incentive bill 1152, the impact of 1152, about $910,000. And then when you look at all the other debt changes in the general fund, we have an increase in interest income, there was a decrease in permanent subsidies. So when, when wash came out of our residential structure, about $70,000 decrease for all the rest of the revenue overall. So that gave us right at about $1.6 million to really work with, everything else being the way it is. We had a conversation, just as you know, Friday, on sales taxes. I believe that there is some room for us to increase that, make some adjustments upwards on sales tax, for a couple of different reasons. Why, is the methodology with property is a little more conservative than we need to be. So there is some room for us to make some adjustments there, and we have a slide that we can kind of go over that in more detail, if the council is ready for that discussion. And then at figure 18, kind of how do we actually deploy the 1.6 million? So obviously, employee compensation is $820,000. The five police officers we mentioned, plus an increase in boost and overtime, goes $590,000. We are also proposing, and I do want, although we can talk about this a little bit more when we get to, into the CIP, the capital managements, we are proposing to reduce our impact of community enhancement in the CIP as well as Lot alleys. Part of the alley strategy is that we kind of go back to under the three, excuse me, under Senate bill two, where we would have envisioned that we're going to have more elections. And so if we start getting into what the public will pay for, we need to ask them. So we put that out in front of them. So, so we're starting to try to look at areas where we're just salting away a lot of dollars into cash, and then the question becomes, you know, under, under these circumstances, it's better to package together as a bond issue and actually have an election on that. I'm not talking about the kind of things that last five years, seven years. I'll give you a perfect example. You know, we set aside cash every year in utility fund for capital managements. So we were salting away money in there for improvements that will last 20, 30 years, you know, replacing a water line, doing stuff like that. This is part of where the conversation will have at the next meeting, but where we're kind of revamping and re-discussing this because, you know, when we repay a water tower and it's going to get us another seven to 10 years, that's a great use for cash on an annual basis to fund that kind of stuff. But if you're going to actually use ongoing cash today to fund something that's going to last 20 or 30 years, why not spread that out in the future where you're going to have your public, people who use it, the customers who are going to benefit from that, pay that out, help pay for that over time? No different really than what we're talking about with the general fund as well. There are some things that I absolutely do believe we need cash for. We love that concrete pavement replacement plan that we have, because we do it with panels. We need money to, not just to fix potholes, but we need money to, you know, to increase the life of an asset, so we don't let it get to the place where we have to basically reconstruct the whole street. So that money includes things also like crack ceiling and foam injection, and things that we do to improve the life of that product. But I think it is going to be time for us to rethink our strategy in terms of the amount of cash we're setting aside in lieu of the elections that we think that will be coming forward.
I just want to add to that, you said, you know, we're going to be making decisions that our residents will need to make decisions on capital improvements as opposed to using cash. But, but in addition to that, the three and a half percent cap could cause our residents to make decisions on how much we're going to fund current operations too. So I just wanted to make sure I said that every time I can say it. You know, not only are we going to be making more decisions, more elections on capital, we're going to be making, very potentially, we have an election on operations. Are we funding these police officers? Are we funding these firefighters? Are we funding these support personnel?
I should have emailed this one, I'm sorry, but if, if we added like half a cent or quarter or cent or even as much as a cent to debt services, what does that do for future bonding capacity?
So, right now, right now, the $60 million bond election for 2018 is built in. It includes both because debt is falling off, and it also includes the, some amount of growth, although the growth has been higher than that target number. So we're comfortable that with the next 20 years. Were you thinking of the next bond election in 2021?
Yeah, I'm thinking of going forward if it's starting to, because looking at that strategy.
There's a slide on there, if you were to like to pop it in.
Okay, that's good. Then let's talk about-
I have ten questions, but-
I can talk about it.
And we can move, we can jump forward to that.
I have a question. I know it's quite slightly complicated, it won't make sense. We'll talk a lot later here, whatever you want, just so we have that conversation.
Okay. Well, we can do that, we can talk about it then.
Yes, page 35.
Specifically, I think maybe this might help. There was, there had been, there was a couple of pennies salting away in this deal. Remember last year, we did the three-year tax note? And that provided the ability to preserve two penny on the tax rate that in the 2021 election will be available for new bonds.
Right. My question is, if we made it two and a half pennies, or 2.22 pennies, or 2.3 pennies, what does that do for future, future tax?
And I want to, I want to make sure, I'm not sure everybody caught this, this, this is different from the strategic planning session. This budget proposed by the city manager moves a penny from debt service to M&amp;O. So I don't even know if that, I don't know if that's why you're asking that penny, we need to ask that question for that penny, but there's also another penny available below the 8% cap.
Mayor, you could remind me, it did not end up being quite that. Because originally, we thought it would be basically a whole penny. But when we got down to, this is the reason we made this decision ultimately, we got down to essentially to stay, to stay- We got down to essentially to stay, to stay in the same tax rate plus a two hundred thousand dollar tax. At that point, it just made more sense just to do it through operations rather than try. What we, what we did last year was about a million and a half dollar tax and we could stretch that over three.
But it's going from twenty two six to twenty one nine. So that's eight tenths of a penny.
Okay, yes, sorry. And again, I just want to have a conversation.
You're more right than I was, Mayor, sorry.
And it's more just, just have the conversation, it's time to have that conversation. We're just throwing everything out on the table right now. I want to make sure we all understand everything, you know, if we preserve that or if we can go up, especially as you start to talk about what this new strategy is. Does that increase our debt capacity in the future so we can have bigger bonds? And then what does that look like in terms of your O and M on a yearly basis? I just kind of want to understand that, you know, as we are, you know, and this is what I put in my notes here. We're, we're on a very thin line, you know, we, we pride ourselves on being a very, very lean city and I, I agree with that. But we're on the thin line of not being a lean city, being a chief city. I don't want to become a chief city, you know, and so how do we balance all this to do it in the right way that we're still providing the best services as possible? And I like the strategy of pushing debt on the people that are going to use it over the lifetime instead of taking that out of cash. But to do that, we can't do three year, five million dollar bond packages or ten million dollar bond packages. You know, we need to have twenty five, thirty, forty, fifty million dollar bond packages to keep that stuff going. So how much, how much debt do we really need to be paying off and preserving in our tax rate to make sure that we can have those bigger bond packages?
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it that way because I didn't know what you were going with initially. So, so let me say this, you know, this, this bond election we had in twenty eighteen was the largest one we've had, at least in my history, my tenure here. But I'm, but I'm pretty sure probably the largest ever been right at. And we were able to do that because of a combination of growth and because of the, the amount of debt that was dropping off. Because there was about a ten year period, we didn't issue any kind of government bonds except for short term stuff that got paid off. So with that, with that, and we were able to do that without changing the tax rate on the INS by preserving the twenty two cents. Where, I, I think what we're seeing at least at staff level, Senate Bill Two changing for us in the future is that, you know, the next election, we're thinking probably even because of the two pennies we preserved this past year, because of the, the debt that still will drop off in the future and, and some target amount of growth, we're thinking that, so about thirty something million dollars that we would be able to issue in twenty twenty one without changing the tax rate. We don't think.
Based on this debt service of twenty one nine?
That was based on the twenty two cents.
You see, it's less debt.
So it's going to be less than twenty one nine.
So, but, but you have growth, that's going to be included in that. But here's the bottom line, I think this is, thirty million dollars is not going to be enough for what this city is going to need. This next bond election is going to have to talk about facilities. Wherever the, you know, whether we do the city hall first or public safety building first or whatever it is, there are going to be facility needs in the next few bond packages, the library at some point, whatever, whatever that is. Secondly, you're going to have, you know, the streets and out of the neighborhood improved, they're never going to go away. You know, we're fixing needs now, but there's going to be other ones that we have to start on the very next.
I agree.
We are going to be, our alley improved somehow.
Right, you're making my point for me is that those needs are there and, you know, we need to spend two hundred thousand dollars at the animal services show. I totally believe that. But, you know, if we could put in another penny and that allows us to now have another fifty million dollar bond package so that we can build a new animal shelter in three years, then it doesn't pay me as much not to give them another hundred thousand dollars this year because I know we have a plan in place to be able to get to that. But thirty, thirty, thirty for the next nine years, we're just going to be kicking the hand out of the road. So I think we really have to look at that and see, and again, this is all open for discussion, you know, we're discussing everything. There's a lot of needs, but thirty, 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 and I know we're going to have growth and that's going to help, that's going to help a lot. But I just, I just, you know.
It's ten, ten, ten. It's thirty in total. Yeah. Not thirty, 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 it's ten, ten, ten.
Well, he said thirty, thirty, thirty over nine years.
It's thirty, thirty, right. You can't look out. We can't delay animal service in this ten more years. It just can't happen.
But we have got to build everything into O and M that we need now because of the three and a half percent cap. Because O and M is subject to the three and a half and INS is not.
I agree.
And INS, you go to, you go to a vote and the citizens make that decision. So I'm not in favor of moving anything out of O and M.
No, I'm not either. And that's why I want to have all of these discussions because I think our job is to not kick the hand out of the road whether it costs me how much this next year or not, and if that means that we have to do.
Go up to a cap. But I don't want to take it out of O and M.
I agree. So I want to just look at all of those things and see where it is and then see how much we can add. And how much wiggle room do we have there? So we have to go up in O and M, because what we don't need to go. And the rest of that, if we did decide to go up within debt services, what does that mean for our future pass and debt?
And I think it's a good point. For example, if we did utilize that extra, you know, this year, we would have it available for INS the next year when we go to twenty twenty one. We have the two pennies that we did in this tax note this last time. So we, and we have debt that will drop off. So we know that there is going to be some additional capacity, but, but again, you're on thirty million dollars that we're thinking we have, we may possibly have. It's still not going to be where we think it's going to be.
So we just had that discussion, that's great. Wendy, the, the reduction in the INS rate from twenty two six to twenty one nine is, seven, eight, ten, whatever it is. What does that do to our debt service next year and to our INS rate and our O and M rate next year? I'm not expecting you to answer that off the top of your head, but I'm concerned because I want to make sure we're not taking too much away. Let's say we stay with the structure. I want to understand how, not, not just how that affects another bond program, but how it affects next year.
INS rate is based on the INS rate in that year. So if, if it possibly, if that debt falling off, it's going to offset any type of financial structure we can, it's going to go up next year?
No, because we're using growth also, right? Okay, it's not just debt rolling off. So, so like if you go to page fourteen, we're using five hundred ninety one thousand of the increase in property tax values from property taxes and three hundred sixty two is from debt at the target. I want to understand that scenario for next year with a lower INS rate being proposed in this budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
When will we use that calculation there?
So we go.
We were on figure eighteen. I appreciate you pausing for that conversation because it's going to be something we're going to need this year at some point. And I think that maybe when we go up to CIP, we may need to kind of flush out any more, I think we'll get things for that that you asked. Just some of the other staffing changes, you know, four point seven five. Again, we mentioned those earlier, so I'm not going to, I'll delay with it again at this point. And then, and then just some of the other projects, net projects we got. But that's how we deployed the one point six million dollars. But I do, Mayor, I do want to kind of spend a couple of minutes just kind of discussing what did not make it into the budget. Because I do have, you know, on Friday, we sent you guys the, the unfunded list and the funded list. Looks a little different because I, I colored ones that were just just from my own application. But, you know, there were a lot, a lot of requests in there this, this year. And there's a lot of needs. There were things that did not get funded that still cost me a lot of parlor. One thing that the mayor brought up earlier, the safer grant. So even though we didn't, we're, we're not changing the funding level in this year for the first two years for that twenty five percent, that bill is going to do in the future. Strategically, we also wanted to build our employee benefits fund balance due to ninety days. We wanted to increase general fund reserves over time till we reach twenty five percent. There's other strategic issues in this budget, twenty two point six cents that we mentioned, Matt. These, these are things that, you know, it's, it's almost like with, with what we know is coming in the future, how many things can we fix now? And we can't fix them all. As a matter of fact, it's very difficult to even fix one. You know, and once, once that happens, it's going to be even harder to fix that. In the future, you know, if we wanted to start building that employee benefits fund strategy when we hit the three and a half percent and I need three hundred fifty six thousand dollars and the three and a half percent gives me five hundred thousand dollars in revenue, you can see that that's not going to be a, a solution that we can, we can work from. So it's, and, and when you need to hire people and you need to pay wages, you have to do all the other things too, so. So that was a major thing that I would like to have been able to do in this budget was to fix what I would consider to be some structural things and better prepare us for, better position us for the future. The other thing I wanted to, to mention was that there are, there are some one-time funds that, you know, that we are proposing to use in the capital maintenance dollars, some leftover project fund. And that we're proposing a lot of that to buy some of the equipment that we did not end up making it into a tax note and that we did not end up deploying in some other fashion. We also have one point three million dollars available that we have been preserving for future facilities or land acquisition. This is a transparency issue. I just want to make sure it's on council's radar. I certainly would not want to use it for operational purposes. But, but if we use it for some capital needs, like for example, if one of the decision points was we're going to use a hundred thousand for the animal services building, you know, maybe that's a good conversation to have. I, my preference is to preserve as much as possible until after the facilities assessment. So I just want to put that out there. But it is a policy decision on what we do with those dollars. We have proposed using, you know, land acquisition in the past. And, you know, so those dollars are there, but just, just to know when we start using that, that's gone.
And then what paid three million came from?
Came from the, the sale of some property next to the water tower on Lively Grove, the next to the QT. So the city sold some of that property related to the global investment project. And then about three or four years ago, you know, we kept that money since.
And we had that earmarked for a land purchase that we are still trying to do with ours. And then the six hundred thirty eight thousand leftover capital maintenance funding, help us understand that a little bit better.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The six hundred thirty eight thousand leftover projects in the capital maintenance fund, help us understand that six thirty eight thousand.
Oh, okay, thank you. So Mayor, what, what that was is when we funded the Villarreal ad project, that was, I think, several million dollars. It was a combination of different funding sources. And the dust settled on that and we paid out all the dollars we were supposed to. That left three hundred seventy one thousand dollars left over. Two hundred ten thousand dollars was left over this year because we didn't fully fund the, we didn't, we didn't have enough people on the construction crew to be able to use those dollars. So it was left over. We need to preserve that for the future or we can use it for now. We have a construction crew that we use in the capital management program. And then on the third firm plan, we had fifty seven thousand dollars left over. And that's the six hundred thirty eight we mentioned. These are leftover project funds that we did not spend.
That's why I know they weren't.
That's right. And so they are available for other purposes. Any for constraints, alleys or whatever, or what we're proposing to do is somebody's facility improvements. That, that helps.
I ask a question about the CDPG funds. This one's seven hundred seventy five, I think it's twenty four. For CDPG, CDPG funds, who's coming here to throw some over? Is it seven hundred seventy five or twenty four?
Five hundred and fifty.
I was about to say, I was about to say, it's been a little too long. And I don't remember if it was seventy five or exactly what you were talking about.
The hundred seventy five specifically were the projects of, you know, of capital maintenance. That is the, we added together the sidewalk replacement, the utility assistance, assistance for the Salvation Army and the house we had. This is the amount, it's not CDPG money. I want to be clear about that.
Yeah, I'm understanding.
It's the, it's the kind of thing that could possibly be under CDPG, like we were using for those projects.
So that was my question, was the, is how we do it for, you know, E's, was we spend it on alley and we take money out of general fund? But that money that, so is that general fund money that we take out as O and M or is that we can?
It is general fund.
That's not, that's not linked to water bills. So to me, our, you know, the discussion I love is that we spent CDPG funds, that was CDPG funds used for and not spent hundred seventy five or, again, we're trying to make every penny count. We spent CDPG funds where they can be spent. We deal with reporting issues and then we take that extra hundred seventy five or whatever it is, you know, like we put in.
Matt, it is a strong argument and one, why we identified it the way we did, but, but just to understand that CDPG funds is not free money. The amount of work that has to be done to, first off, to ensure that we get a perfect audit because by God, we're going to get a perfect audit. With no findings, so we're always going to do that, but it just, it's a lot of work and there are just so many nuances of this. Somebody has to be specialized in that. We've had two people in the last few years that, that learned a lot about that. And it's just a lot of work. So the alleys, the busy.
I don't know what's going on. I understand, I totally understand, but I want to hear more on this first.
Yeah, it is on my list also. I want it on the iffy list for us to discuss. Just full disclosure, you know, historically before Chris Fieldmore, we were utilizing CDPG funds in this manner for like alley replacement, which benefits those communities. And that's why it qualifies for CDPG funds. And, you know, Chris really wanted, Chris really was pushing to be able to find some other programs that helped our community with CDPG funds. And when we went down that, in our history, when we went down that path, we really discovered that really the only maybe that can meet the reporting requirements for the CDPG funds is Life Message because they do it in so many of their other programs. Even the Salvation Army was having trouble all the way they can do it. We were, we were managing it internally and using almost a full FTE to manage it, which was close to ninety thousand, a hundred thousand dollars a year in administrative costs and the opportunities lost. So that's when Todd came up with the idea of use it all for an easy program and match it with a general fund and match it with those programs that are beneficial in our CDPG type programs. So I'm just giving you all some history. I, I can't in good conscience use a hundred thousand dollars of general funds for a park project from a matching CDPG fund standpoint instead of hiring another police officer. I can't do it. I wouldn't support it. I do, I personally continue to support the utility assistance because I think so many of our residents utilize that. It's once a year, it's a make or break for many, many of our residents.
And I agree. I understand that there's, that there's, that it takes a lot of staff time, but I've done CDPG grants in other cities before and I've done reporting on before. And yeah, it's a lot of work. There's a lot of government works, there's a lot of government grants that are a lot of work. But it means that, like, we can still get those assistance and it's just more work for somebody.
Yeah.
I don't know. I just kind of, that there's an argument.
Well, we can tell the Salvation Army they got to meet the CDPG requirements. Life Message meets them. Salvation Army probably meets them for other cities that get the assistance from them. But, you know, funding the housing rehab and funding the park improvements through a general fund match, I don't think this is a year we can do that.
I agree.
I definitely have that on the if we do. Mayor, just, just to kind of keep up with this, we were thinking that, that we could take a break here in a few minutes and then we'll come back. I would like to tap you a couple of big times. And we talked about property taxes and things, sales taxes, but we'd like to kind of get into the tax plan, I think, tonight before we leave. And then also go through the list on the staff each. So will we be ready for a break or?
Great. Yep.
Mayor, at this point, what I like. Mayor, at this point, what I'd like to do, if you don't mind, is to kind of move into the pay plan for this year. And I want to recommend that we do that before we go into the staffing list. I think we might make some decisions to make in those areas if that's okay.
Yeah, I want to mention one other thing. And I know we're already two hours into a three-hour meeting. You know, I asked for the detail of the outside services by department. And you gave us that detail. And we all have lots of questions about it. And that's kind of all in. So, I'm not sure how we fit that all in. But I think it's important we spend a few minutes on that area because we're going to generate some questions for y'all to go off and figure out.
Okay. All right. So, what I've asked Richard to do is particularly since the original plan was built a couple of years ago, is to kind of go back to a little bit of the methodology. More as a reminder, we're not going to spend a lot of time on that. And then we'll kind of get into specifics of this year and kind of the impact. So, Richard, I want you to take it off, sir.
Thank you. Briefly, the whole point of pay plan obviously is to be competitive with our pay. So, annually, since 2017, we have done a pay study. We compared our average pay to the average pay of eighteen cities. Then twice fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, based on that salary survey, we moved the pay steps and were paid for all employees for this fire and open range. The goal obviously is to provide merit and step increases going forward that allow us to be market competitive within the opponent market here in Dallas, Texas. Desired outcome has always been to provide applicable compensation for all employees, provide system that's understood, accepted by all employees, administer pay increases we may have that allow the city to attract, motivate, retain great employees, provide for and maintain internal equity and external competitiveness, apply with all applicable laws and regulations, establish a system that's physically sound and cost-effective, provide for a program that's easy to administer and maintain. As a reminder, in the very beginning of the program, we converted all positions to the new pay plan. That would be all the rage positions. Police and fire did not change. Comprehensive, complete, compliant employer regulations. We made sure that our position descriptions are compliant so that if somebody comes in and looks at them for a party, they show all the required necessary elements of the position description. We rated all the position descriptions based on fifteen compensable factors. One, two, three, four, have that slide in session. And then fine tune those ratings. And the truth is, we fine tune those ratings all the time. So, as jobs change, we can evaluate the value of those jobs against other incumbents here in the city and make sure that there's internal happening. The fifteen factors are knowledge and skill requirements. So, experience, general, experience management, education, initiative and agility, mental demand, mechanical ability and problem solving. This software was created by the Johansson Consulting Group. It ultimately is being marketed as D B squared. You can look it up online. Responsibilities, work of others, funds equipped in the property, accuracy and results, human contacts, so the contact with public, contact with employees, then machine and computer operations, working conditions and hazards and physical domain. We then built the pay plan so that we could go out to the external market and do a comparison. We do all these warrant positions where it's divided. And then we picked about forty-six or so open range positions across all thirty pay ranges so that we get a representative sample from the market. This is where we come. So, going forward, we've measured the variance in the spring seventeen, the variance in spring eighteen, the variance in spring nineteen. And the city is making progress toward each time we measure being a little bit more competitive in the market with our peers. And we're always measuring after we make adjustments. So, going forward, we measure again, decide to use the same methodology in the future. Fiscal year spring twenty, we'll have another benchmark as to where we are as a relative stat average. When we measure this year, this is how the graph looks. I showed this to council already. I'm going to briefly go through it. If we do the pay adjustment as proposed in the city manager's budget, in a static world, it would move us to that location at about minus point eight percent below the mean. For fire, when we measure, we're about minus three point two one percent. We do the pay adjustment as proposed, two percent steps. We would move all that to about that location, around minus four point five. For open range employees, when we measure, we're about six percent behind the average pay. If we do the pay adjustment as stated, we would do about minus point one three. Where this is the mean, not the median, is an average. This is the proposal that's in the city's budget. It moves all employees' pay, whether they're on a step plan and then they're in the open range, two percent over first, first pay cycle we pay the whole number. In addition, police and fire will still move through the steps. Step on their anniversary day, they're still moving through the steps. And if you're an open range employee, you'll be eligible for a step or merit adjustment based on performance evaluation at the end of this year on your anniversary date or your position date. The projected amount of cost is about three point three percent. We'll remove, reduce the overall variance to about slightly less than three point four seven percent, five point three point four seven percent below the average.
Richard, I want you to stop there.
Yes.
I just want to talk a little bit of range from this because I need to understand. This shows the new variance of point eight three percent up. Go to the previous slide.
I think it was an error on that. It says point one three.
It says point one three.
So, I believe the point eight three is right and I apologize. So, that is correct. That's supposed to be correct.
Actually, right.
That's right. It is.
Right.
Sorry.
Thought you'd go back another slide. So, go back another. So, fire would be point three five. So, go back to the summary.
So, these are the variances when we measure.
No, I want to know the variances.
Okay, other way.
Sorry.
Problem.
Couldn't tell which way you were going. Okay, so point three five, point seven four is in the previous, okay. All right. Thank you. So, do you think the point seven eight is based on the point eight three or based on the point one three?
So, it is a blend.
That's not a question. Is the point seven eight based on the right number for open range or based on the point one three for the open range?
It's based on the right.
Thank you.
So, I have two examples in here that use minimum pay, maximum pay, average pay. So, when we did the salaries study this year, those numbers represent police officer average pay for the cities that are listed. Currently, our average pay is sixty-eight thousand per quarter that week. If we do the two percent adjustment and continue to move people through the steps, the projected average pay would be seventy-two thousand six hundred. If you do minimum and maximum, our minimum currently is fifty-six, one forty-four. Two percent moves that step to fifty-seven, two sixty-seven. Our maximum currently is seventy-seven, five sixty-one. Moves that maximum to seventy-nine, one thirteen. So, you can see how our minimums and maximums are represented against our peers. I put in there that lateral starting pay is up to sixty-four thousand four twenty-three. I think it's important because we now have a mechanism where we could actually hire somebody depending on how many years of experience they have, five, they've been certified police officer in a similarly situated city and gives us really good entry pay for somebody to come on far up the list.
Richard, I think it's, one thing that, Mayor, we are providing this other additional information. But I do think it would be new to us to really explain how we get the averaging. Because that is what the methodology is based on. So, if you would want to take a moment.
Sure. So, currently, we're using average pay as our benchmark. So, if we reach out to the eighteen cities and we ask the eighteen cities to provide us with their average pay for the positions that we provide. So, in our case, or the case of any city there, we say, you have ten police officers or a hundred police officers. We want to know what their average base pay is. So, our methodology is to benchmark average pay and continue to move our pay status forward using actual pay that these cities are paying their employees. I put up the minimum and the maximum because it was reasonably questioned lately that perhaps this methodology would be better potentially. And it is a valid methodology. It is used out in market case. I think actual pay for a long period of time bears out to be more statistically significant and accurate than using pay ranges. But they both exist and they both have validity to them when you're doing compares.
But top tenure does impact average and doesn't impact step. Minimum and max.
And so, these are parts of the, there's always going to be pieces of every study or every methodology that has some things about it that aren't ever going to be perfect. But over time, tenure bears out. You'll come, though, you're going to get average pay. When you get eighteen cities statistically over a long period of time, those tenure issues are going to bear out because the average pay is going to ultimately be statistically right. Because whether today we have lots of entry level people or today we have lots of pensioned people, over time, it's going to bear out to show that our average pay is competitive against our peers. Because that's, there's always going to be influx and outflow of people.
I do want to mention too, that, you know, that as you saw from the pre, a couple of slides ago, we are still moving along and continuing. And we started off nearly ten percent behind the market using the exact same methodology. Then the next year, we made progress. This year, we're making progress in the way this is proposed. One thing that we would have a concern about is if we didn't get the cities to participate. So, I did ask Richard to verify, you know, what I thought I remembered. And the first year we did is we had seventeen of the eighteen cities. The last two years, we've had all eighteen participate. So, I just want to make sure that I say that. Secondly, you know, and usually, I've worked in a lot of organizations that use the men in the max. And then they decide really where steps should go and those kinds of things. But it is funny about pay. Nobody's ever happy about pay. I can tell you that. I just, two, thirty-something years of doing this, I know this. The one thing that, that a big argument about using the men in the max is that, you know, well, that's not what really people are making. And so, that's a big argument. And I, I've heard that so many times. I didn't know that that's one of the arguments that is out there. Is that, yeah, this may be the minimum pay, but that's not really what other cities are paying the people. So, at least by using the average, we're answering that. What are people really being paid? And this is what the other cities are telling us that they're being paid. Whether you have a hundred police officers or whether you have, you know, twelve, you know, this is what they're averaging, what they're paying. There is a fundamental assumption that has to be true when you consider the averaging method. And that is that our average tenure is about the same as all the other cities. And I think that's an important distinction because if you have a city with a high level of turnover and you have a lot of young officers, for example, you're going to skew this one way or the other. And if you have a city that has very little turnover and you have all season officers who are already at the top of the range, that skews it a different direction. So, so that is true. But there's also skewing in the men in the max. You can still have the same kind of issue there. It just plays out in a different way. So, to Richard's point, I just want to make this clear. Both methods are valid. Both methods are used by other cities. And I just want to be, be clear about that. We chose this method two years ago when we built this with the Johansson Group or other cities that do it. It had a lot of appeal to us at the time because it answered that fundamental question what other cities really are paying their people? So, that was a big issue for us. And we, we thought that over time, particularly if we continued to do the market analysis every year, that was the one thing we did here. We did not do in the past. We would essentially do a couple of calls in the bill and then every three years or so, go out for a whole new pay plan. We are keeping up with, in the sense that we resurvey the exact same information every year.
Can I inject one?
Yeah.
The other thing that this paper or software package does for human resources is it allows us to value job using a system that actually has been built over thirty years that has points associated with those fifteen factors. And it helps us manage internal happiness or so for open range, and for police and fire. But it still helps us do all those things we need to do to make sure where you don't have any biases toward one job or another that would affect potentially something legal like bias against female against others. So, it helps us measure job over job over job. Lots of systems don't have a good methodology to that. This really helps with that. It also gives us compliant position descriptions. So, we don't have to be concerned that the government's going to show up and you want us to prove something and ultimately not be able to do it.
On your list up here, your average, what is the lowest ranking officer that you, that you include in the average? Is it a rookie?
So, today.
A control officer.
Yeah. So, today, we would include everything. So, we would take the person who was just hired all the way to the person with max now. And as a matter of fact.
It is job description.
Yeah. When I build in it, when I build the model, we project forward two percent plus all the steps. So, we have an idea of what the average pay would be in a static world that we move everybody forward. But we use all of them.
I guess all of these, it's your numbers that you have here. You have everybody from, the rookie who was hired yesterday all up to chief, wrong max. Now, this is.
It's just police officers.
Just.
I just carved out one position for the other.
We do the same thing forward sergeant.
Just for represent.
We do the same thing. That was my question.
Yeah, sorry. The goal is, we, we measure all police and all fire ranks. So, we're measuring all of them and coming up with a mean average pay against the mean average of the other cities where the jobs are comparable.
But can we find out how many of those eighteen cities use what methodology to calculate their salaries?
I think you'll find it all across the board.
Sure.
That would, that would help.
Yeah. Remember, some, some locations are going to just make decisions based on what resource is available there.
Right. Just as a little side note, I always have a discussion with authority level in Garland today. Forty percent of their workforce is retirement age. And a great portion of that is.
What'd you say, retirement?
Forty percent of their workforce in Garland is retirement age, entire workforce. And that's back to the point of if you've got, you know, if you've got a lot of tenured employees in whatever job category, they're going to be hiring stuff in a higher average. Just a whole data point. I was pretty shocked.
So, what, did you go through the increase last year?
Three.
Just, just to be clear for staff, what it was, it was three. Did that move the scale? And if you're, if you had a step available, you would move another step. If you were topped out, then it would only be three.
Same as here, except the two was rather a boxer.
Mayor, Richard, you did the same thing for fire as well?
I did. Just for E M T and for paramedic, which is a little more difficult for us because we have a different philosophy than a lot of organizations on how we reward paramedics. But we go through the two slides. So, when we did our pay study, those cities that are under the average pay for E M T provide us with an average. In some cases, it will be the same average as for paramedic because that's the information they provided. We did not specifically question. Our entry pay currently for E M T. Our entry pay currently for EMT is 56,987. And if we proposed and do the 2%, and move them through the steps, the average pay would move to 60,000 through 79. There are only nine EMTs. Six of them are all paramedics, moving either through, whatever they do to become a full fledged paramedic here, though, if they're served by paramedic, but they're going through whatever training we put them through before we assign them to be a paramedic. When they become a paramedic, they go to entry paramedic pay, which is on the next slide, and I'm going to talk about that. So, using the minimum pay and the maximum pay from the cities that provided the EMT range, you can see where we fall at the minimum, 55,104. And if we move the 2%, it goes to 56,206. Other cities, the, shoot, the maximum is 60,753, there's only three steps, and we would move that last step to 61,968. Any questions?
Why didn't you say there's only three steps?
There is only three steps for EMT.
But how does that translate? Is it 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 between the men and the max? How does that work?
So, it's a, there was a specific distance between each one, and I believe it's 4%, but I don't have to go back and measure. That was established in the pay plan, it was done in 13, 14.
It's me over 4%.
I think this is an easier answer, maybe I might have given you a little help with it, but part of the issue is that if we want people to be fired by a paramedic, and so the next level of pay to get to paramedic is substantially more than the...
I'm not asking an EMT question, I'm asking, how, what's the distance between steps?
It's about 4%. And so, if step one is 56,000...
Okay, so, so the difference between men and max is about 12%, is what you're saying? If there's three years?
In this case, yeah.
If there's three years? Okay, I got it.
Paramedic, and I think on police, it's more like seven or six.
Well, paramedic is...
Seven, eight, that's three.
That's right.
But that, you know, every, you look at the police, I mean, that slide, everything was within, I'd say, you know, except for some outliers like Plano and some others, was within, probably about five thousand dollars. This between, there's a huge jump in there on the max pay scale with men, and the averages are not too horrible, and the men's not too, it's pretty good, but it seems like everybody's paying their EMTs more in a higher level.
And the philosophy here is, we want people to move to paramedic, and hence, the pay is deliberately at this level to keep or inspire people to move forward to be a paramedic. That's why there's only nine, and there's six of those are going to ultimately be paramedics in very short period of time.
I think, I think the next slide is what we're talking about, and that discussion, the less of the paramedic.
Yes, that's, that's our philosophy. So, currently, our average pay for firefighter and paramedic is $68,718 every one of this salary. If we do the 2%, if we move, people do the steps, the average pay would be projected to be 70,257. Only compared the cities I had data for and provided it through the paramedic classification. When a EMT, when a person who's hired at the entry level of an EMT, who's a paramedic, finishes their training, they move to $63,183. Somewhere between two and 10 months, depending on the individual's training, if our department corrected on that or not, that's what I think has happened in my time here. If we do the 2%, and move people through the steps, then our projected, excuse me, will be, excuse me, our projected minimum 2% is 64,447. The maximum pay currently is 71,831, 2% increase takes it to 73,367.
Also, one thing I did want to make current your attention, that the average pay is the average pay, and it's what the, what the other cities tell, 100 police officers, they're going to be paying on that. But the, the issue with the minimum pay and the maximum pay, there are cities out there who, for example, paramedics use incentive pay, so that would pay salary, and then they use an incentive pay, and we've done that in the past too as well. Cities kind of sometimes do step up pay a little differently, sometimes their overtime is different because they, they have like, we have, we have a 15 day pay cycle, some cities do it a little bit differently. So, premium pay sometimes is a little bit different from these other cities. So, this, this comparison that we're showing on minimum, this is their posted, this, this is what these cities posted that the entry level salary is for those positions. But, but to what Richard said earlier, in some cases, some cities do not distinguish between EMT and paramedic. We do, but not every city does that. Or, some cities posted the EMT, but then they pay incentive for the paramedic. So, I, to Mayor's point earlier, we're never really going to get apples to apples here, or maybe get red apples to red apples, but, you know, it, no matter what method you take, there's always going to be some flaws in it, but, but, you know, the goal here is to try to be competitive. We don't want people leaving because of pay. We want to be able to recruit them, and we want to be able to keep them, and make them happy in terms of the salary that we offer, the benefits we offer. So, we wanted to show the difference between the two scales, but it really, you know, our focus, we believe that if we stayed with our current system and our current methodology, that we will continue to make progress over time. The last point I want to make is that, you know, we recognized two years ago when we developed this methodology, that we were going to be a year behind to start with, because when we do this analysis each spring, we're, we're taking what people put in their pay plan that year, and then we're applying it for the next year. So, just understand that, you know, even though our goal is to continue on and continue, at some point, we want to start catching up so that we're, we are, you know, in alignment with what people are paying at that moment, and not, and not just always being a year behind. But that's going to, that takes time, and it takes resources, it really does.
So, how many steps are there between once you get paramedic from six? There's six.
And that 4% again?
I had to go, and I, I don't have it to calculate.
It can't be that much, because one thing that jumps out at me at this is that, same thing, we're, we're the smallest, we have more on the high end on the men, but we're the smallest gap between the men and the max. And if you have six steps, and you're only gaining less than 10 grand, that does not make sense. Like, that, that max has got to be higher.
Wasn't it, didn't it have to do with the EMT and the, have you remember, Neil? Did it have anything to do with the fact that we had the EMT at three steps, and then we kind of built the paramedic at six? Technically, it's kind of maybe the whole range?
Yeah, it's the whole range you can down, but there's a difference between EMT and the paramedic, and a pretty good jump there. And then, I believe it's 3% or 4% between steps and paramedic, if I'm not mistaken.
But the issue is not that there's six steps between men and max, the issue is our max is not competitive to the other cities.
Yeah, I'm fine with having six steps, I don't know what the process is to get through your six steps, you know, it'd be interesting to know. But if you're going to go through that, make it harder to get through the six steps or whatever, but if you're going to go through all that, and your max needs to be higher, you can't just make, I understand that you want to, if you want to incentivize people to go on and get their paramedics, then you should incentivize them to do it quicker because they know that they can get to that higher salary quicker because there's a higher max. But here, the higher max is not enough.
I, I mean, I don't, I understand that you're doing the averages, and I understand there's no perfect plan, but I do think as a part of looking at our salary structure for paramedics, we need to look at that max from a competitive standpoint.
Completely. I mean, I think we're too far off, the average is a little lower than, like, maybe curious if we went three, where that would take us up 23% versus 2%. But, yeah, I think we do evaluate what that pay scale is in terms of what the max is.
The whole, the whole men max is aligned.
Yep. Yeah, why were the highs in the men, but then the lows, what's the lows in the max?
I don't think there's one perfect way to look at this, I think you have to look at all those data points.
I'd also like to know, line 2% stepped to 3%.
Because we don't have the budget dollars.
It came down for me, you know, when we, when we had our strategy session, we didn't know about the sales tax issue at that time. We found that out on July 14th, basically three weeks after the finished, you know, preparation. But it was a huge bunch of the guy. So, at that point, we ended up...
How was that the strategy session, why we said we needed to fill positions?
I understand, but I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, there could have been different choices made at that point, had that not happened, Mayor, and that, I just, I want to acknowledge that, you know, part of it was, you know, my, the goal was to try to hire more police officers this year, even if it meant that we couldn't go to 3% in terms of the minimum. And, and as it was, it helped us hire some, it just didn't quite get to the eight that we were shooting for. And there may be ways to get to that when we have this discussion, but that was kind of what it was.
I guess, in my way of thinking, if you go to two this year instead of three, we go back to kicking the can down the road, or rolling the tire down, we'll never catch up to that 1%.
We just got to figure out where the money comes from. Where's the money come from eight police officers? Where's the money come from 3% raise? Where's the money?
If you don't have it to look for, you won't look for. So, I'm just saying, for...
Well, Brownie, we gave that guidance at the strategic planning session. It's not, it's not Brian that did all this. We, we on this council said, we have to prioritize hiring new police officers too. So, I don't, I'm confused by your question of where did it come from, because it came from the seven of us.
So, I was just, just to give you a word, the two, one, 2%.
Because we gave that direction, six of us, you weren't there.
Yeah, you weren't there.
But that's why we're going through this, to see if, where, you know, where do we have more resources?
That's what I'm saying, I'm just going out on the title, you know, who can find it, who would like to approach?
I'm just confused by your question of where it came from, because it came from us.
Still saying, we need to approach, you know, but it's one mistake, we'll never catch up. Even so, even if it was 3%, it's not for us now. But we're at the minimum level, so that's, that's definitely... I, you know, Council, I think you, this does raise a good point, and there had been times when we had found outliers within our, the pay scale, there's been some that were in IT, there's been, you know, we have Urban Design Planner, we've had one in the past that, you know, most cities don't have, they don't have form-based code. So, there's been some times we've had to make adjustments, either, you know, wherever it is, to be able to do that. Maybe this is something that, that I think, Richard, if you look at, if we raise that, that cap, where more than just 2% could be at least more competitive than what that would take. I'm talking about adjusted max, because I think we're, we're good on the minimum, and I think the opinion we do overall could either improve the, the average, or the average is going to be relatively competitive. But this is an outlier to see where the max is and see how far out of the way.
You know, when we have that discussion, some of those, it's a discussion probably for another time, I would assume, is how many paramedics do we have in those steps? So, if you raise your max, how does that all work? And what's that do to your budget? And that's what I was...
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I don't know, is it $40,000 fix or a $200,000 bonus?
Yeah, and then what's that do to your overall average? You do, and to your point, so that might, that could change things. And I know, it's, right, so, there's a lot of paramedics, and so, a lot of top down, so it's...
I think it needs to be a second.
All right, so, that's kind of where we're at on the paper. We hit those. Are there any questions for Richard or staff before we do the staffing?
So, I just want to have this discussion in open work session, we did have it in strategic plan, but there's a lot more people watching now than did in strategic plan. The merit component of the salaries, we put that in place for the first time last year. We had a range of zero...
Zero to two and a half, we're the first quartile, zero to two, or anybody above the first quartile, and the average adjustment is just tend to above 2%. It's like 2.3.
Okay. And you think that's effective, or are you happy with that process? Is it working? Do you want to continue down that path?
I definitely want to continue. That way, open range employees have a way to move through the range at the same time that potentially the range is moving. For next year, we're going to implement everybody doing self-evaluation, which was 100% consistent across all the ready. And I think that will help that system be more time agile, so that supervisors can just evaluate an individual, and they just walk in, listen to what happens, and don't necessarily have feedback. It will take a little bit of training for some of those, overall, the system is very, it's worked very well.
And is it accomplishing a goal of providing merit pay to encourage...
It is, and meaningful feedback, yes. And where people, and there are some people that have not received any adjustment because they weren't being in that certification, or they were on the low end of things. So, we're, it's necessary to help people understand they have to change their work performance, and we're going to do that.
It's a real question being here too, because there's people that take the raises actually to improve their work performance.
It's a really fun slide. Take it there. Slide two, let's stand. Yeah, it's, it's the one block.
This is fresh, you, you're kind of fresh, sorry, this is so new, my apologies.
Is this a good place for us to have this conversation, to show all the...
Yeah, or, yes, on the down, up, position, is that in my region, right? Yes. Yeah, so, if you scroll up, for example, you'd see like, one of the one down, there you go.
Can everybody see that? But as we mentioned earlier, there was about 11.25 positions that made in the proposal, but there were 27 and a half positions that did not. I can't see all of them at one time, so we may just have to kind of go through slide by slide. We are proposing to make the firefighter full time, that would be one of the positions that we kind of talked about earlier. There was an environmental specialist that did not make it in. I just want to go through them first real quick. I'm sorry. I can't use this, so. All right. We did want to also hire an intern with the early base budget implementation, that if we end up buying the software, they would want an intern to help for about six months, and then after that, they can...
Put that up in the meeting list.
Oh, yeah. And then, in terms of the fire department, their request, we have funded the halftime EMC, basically to not rely on federal grants. There was also an assistant chief that Chief Howard has asked for, that has to do with primarily the administrative burden and support for that as well, as a logistics captain, and then, of course, there's a fire inspector. The three staff of blocking truck, you know, we, we had a philosophical question, discussion about this, that if we were to hire both more employees to do the blocking truck, you know, there is, there's going to come a need where we really would like a second truck, but is it really more efficient to use firefighters, or is it more, you know, efficient to use, you know, total force tied with, you know, people? So, that is still out there for future discussion, but we have the one blocking truck, and we've had cases where it has not helped, and cases where it wasn't out there at the time. So, we certainly want, we have an $800,000 piece of equipment, we don't want a truck driver hitting accident, just to get found and out, or somebody falls asleep. Down below, in IT, we're going to come back to all these, but in IT, we are funding the IT manager now. There was a request originally for the cybersecurity to be a person, but in, in discussion with Joey, we are proposing at this time that it be a contract to do support, and then add some additional dollars for remediation if, if there are issues that we find.
I thought you were going to say it was going to be a bottom.
Say again.
I thought you were going to say it was going to be a bond.
A bond?
Bond. So it's not going to be a person.
Yeah. But contract. And so the idea behind that, it's a very expensive type position to have. I mean, if you're going to have that full-time on staff, you know, you're talking $120,000, and that's the budget directly that we pay. So I just want to say that. And then there was a request for additional applications before that. Full-time city marshal was a request in the court, and that would basically supervise the, all the bailiffs, and then also do the training and certification that's required for that position. Ten additional lives?
So is that a first-time request this year? Who knows the most about this? I think we need more information on this, on how necessary this position is.
Can I go through the rest of it, and then we'll come back to those? Because I want to make, I just want, this is really briefly, just to kind of remind everybody what the request was, and then we're going to go back through each one. Is that okay?
Okay.
Library assistant hours, it's just really 10 hours a week, I believe, is right, hours a week. 10 hours a week. And then, that is to help support the arts and humanities and commission with all their programs that they do. The library basically provides staff support for that, as well as some administrative support as well. We talked earlier, y'all heard from Angie on the main discussions, too. There was also a request for marketing and sponsorship coordinator, which did not make it into this budget. Place we've mentioned, the five officers that did not make it, so you have the additional three that, or did make it, and the three that did not. There was also a request for CID sergeant, criminal investigation, vehicle sergeant, which did not make it. Public works is the custodian, and then also the vehicle maintenance. There was a request for new field technician, and then administration, basically new public works GIS tech position. So overall, about $2.7 million in new staff requested. I will say that some of that is, you know, some of our departments are thinking also the next year, and the next year. What's not on this list and does not show you is, our police chief was asked for 24 new positions. And so what we were focused on this year, what was asked for this year was eight. So there's 16 additional positions. And this isn't a three, or four, or five-year staffing plan, is what I'm trying to say. This is just really what was focused on and requested for this year. Is there anything below that?
No, that's it.
Oh, that was just a...
Can you scroll back up? Where's first duty, government?
Uh, the environmental health specialist.
That's the only position she asked for?
For this year.
This year, the goal was to have the opportunity to increase our inspections on restaurants, so we had a better tally every year, and that's how we asked for that position. Yes, I did ask for an animal services manager, but that's to lead into the next year, just because we're reorging and realigning basically those functions.
Just have that number in, okay, thank you.
All right, so let's go back through those. Mayor, you asked about the city marshal first, and we can start with that. Essentially, the city marshal would provide court security, regular security, and serving subpoenas for municipal courts. Currently, the city has three part-time deputy marshal positions to assist with court operations. The idea behind the full-time position is to ensure that the marshal, the available support for court needs, you know, during operations. This person would also supervise the part-time bailiffs, because there are part-time bailiffs. It is also kind of hard to hire part-time people for this position, and most are kind of getting folks that are retired. And then the idea behind this, too, is to align all the operations in court under the judge. So as you know, we've got the law changed with the last, with the latest state session, and then that way, the judge can tell over the entire court staff, which was our goal for several years at least. And now that that's happened, we'll want to put the bailiffs under perp duty. And so all the, basically, anything that happens inside that court in that framework, that box, is now also also under the perp duty of the judge.
So does this eliminate one or two of the part-time positions?
They'll end up with some part-time positions, because, well, let me say this, this person would also help serve the bailiff during, during court operations as well. It's just that we felt like it was important to have a full-time position to help oversee those bailiffs and gradually remember more from the court security team, the committee that has looked at this. But we felt like having a full-time person could really solve a lot of issues that we have.
I don't disagree with that, but I just wonder if you can eliminate a part-time position that we need to. I think this has to be looked at.
Yeah, I actually think that, that the part-time positions that cover some of these duties were actually maybe provided by the police department, and so the court had it in their budget. They would just reimburse PD for the cost of those people, and now it's being shifted to, to the court. So I'm not sure how much additional cost this position is adding.
It is, it is actually adding, it's actually here somewhere. But we are actually adding some additional hours into that array by doing it full-time. Because the thing is, we still need weekend, we need big day for it, we still need part-time for that. And you don't want just one bailiff, you want two on at least a general all-time. So regardless of whether it's the full-time, and if they are, they had bailiff at the time, they still have to have a part-time person to support that.
But the full cost of this person can be offset by some of the, that's what I'm allocating for part-time people?
Well, because you're also still having to deal with some of the part-time, it's not quite an offset. I can't say that it was offset.
I think it's... We're adding 2,000, 800 hours a year.
Yes.
And I don't have a good answer of why.
Are the part-time people paying hourly? So you could have three part-time bailiffs that were on the call in to work at certain times. That's correct, that's correct. So you need two areas, you have your city marshal, that's one part-time. That's right, that's right.
You probably can't go down to one part-time bailiff, because you...
Well, I'm saying you have three of them, that you call in, what you pay, and that's it. If you don't have three that are there all the time.
So is there some way that we can get that analysis, or kind of just want me adding?
Yeah, we can. And here's the other thing, I just, just to make sure, this is an issue that we felt was really important for this year. We actually have been recruiting for this position, and we have started interviewing for this position. We feel like it's that critical that we do that, and that's why we've actually started it this year. And we're not actually proposing it for next year, per se. You know, we have not hired the position yet. But I just want to make sure y'all understand that we consider this position to be very important.
And I wasn't questioning this position, especially the part-time positions.
Yeah, my only question is, is it worth, is it really 62,000, does that total 62,000 we already paying for part-time people?
There are, if you're hired, even though we have three or four, probably, because you pay them when they're actually there, okay? So they're not a salary position, these are not. But you got to have, you got to have the two on at any time. So if the part-time, if the full-time marshal is there, and he's one of those, he's still going to have the part-time. So it is going to cost more overall, but there is some, there is some offset from the number of part-time people.
I had an argument, I had with chief about his overtime that I lost.
Want that?
I'm not asking you to call them.
Good.
Just see if you're paying attention, chief.
When you say chief and overtime, I know who you're referring to. Um, okay, all right. Can we go back up to the top? I just want to make sure that... So talk about the grant rider, environmental health specialist. Did you want to touch on that, or did you want to do that?
I can reiterate, the, the goal was to engage this position to increase the number of inspections we do on food establishments, so that we had more transparency out there and more numbers out there for the community. And also, we are growing as well, and the goal was to accommodate. But hopefully, we'll be able to...
Do you, how many do you have now, establishment?
I have a senior environmental health specialist, and I have an environmental health specialist who is not a sanitary, and in order to do the health inspections for food establishments, I need a sanitary.
No more restaurants.
Yeah.
Give us a joke. Stop, pause. Give us a joke.
We talked about the, like, the, chief, would you mind, I'm sorry, specify which chief, Chief Howard. Would you mind touching on your needs for your assistant chief and some of the other positions on there?
Yeah, I mean, currently, we've got the battalion, chef battalion chiefs doing staff jobs. The call volume's gone 50% since I've been here, nearly six years. They're not, they have no capacity to meet order people. They barely make their rounds to their stations every two of their shifts to get to see what's going on, what they're supposed to be doing, because they're tied up doing administrative duties, and it's happened every third day. And it's bleeding into where they're working on their days off. And I can tell you, I've got some of them that are at the end of the rope, they're tired of doing it. And I can't say that I blame them. Like I said, I came here to be a fire chief, I'm still doing assistant chief duties, too. So we're trying our best to split the organization, have operations and administration, so that we can better manage what's going on in our organization. Our inspector, I got two guys trying to keep up with everything that's going on. All we're keeping up with right now, folks, is new construction. We can't hardly touch the current construction, our current inspections that we need to do. It's just overwhelming. And they're inspecting twice as much square footage as they ever have on an inspection. So they're busy all the time. They've got, they've got five plan reviewers, sort of plot plans of them, and this 30-day thing's going to affect us, because we've got to look at all those things. Logistics captain is a position that I've got, that I've got captains doing staff jobs, too. They shouldn't be doing. We have mistakes on purchasing happening from time to time, and luckily, we've caught them. There's going to come a time we're not going to catch it. And so that's, that's the reason. I've got to have some administrative staff do our jobs, and we're going to, we're going to have a failure, it's not going to be good. So I don't want to be in that position. That's kind of a long and short story.
Do you, by chance, know how many fires that we've had this year versus last year? Or by percentage, or any kind of idea?
I know that our, I can tell you, our call volume's gone up about 7.25% this year from last year.
And could you attribute that to lack of inspections?
I'm not going to say that.
I can figure we're having spike in commercial fires this year, as to why, I don't know, we've had, probably positive in commercial part of it.
Stupid.
So chief, I know you've asked for assistant fire chief for years. Can you help us understand your structure versus some of the other North Texas communities? And I'm not asking you to do it off the top of your head, but if you could come back to the next budget session before we make final conclusions of, you know, Plano has this administrative structure with this many firefighters, and I have this.
I can give you some numbers that we have, that we've been working on, as far as when we look at things. Right now, we have an administrative staff, county, our administrative assistant, this counts just the people down at Athens. We've got six folks. Garland has 32 folks in administration. Coffield has nine, Frisco has 31, Colony has seven, Hurst has six, DeSoto has six, Wombeville five, Plano 52, Allen 15, Wadley nine, Richardson 16, Carroll 11, Rockwell eight, Saxon three, McKinney 25, Lewis twelve, Breaker about 13, Prairie 22, and I should keep 28.
I appreciate that. It's good information, it's all over the board, it's a little hard to deal with. What I'm interested in is structure. Okay? So, you know, fire chief, assistant fire chief, you know, whatever those levels are, and I'd like to see that in a chart.
Let me clarify, you're asking for organizational charts from a different...
I'm asking if, I'm asking if we're top week, I was trying to figure out what the word was. Not just administrative staff, I want to understand the recording structure in our early week up there.
We're very...
But I want to see.
Okay. I've got a chart here, I can give you that, so you can see...
Compared to other cities?
This is comparison to all these cities. I just read off how many assistant chiefs or deputy chiefs or battalion chiefs they have in their administrative structure.
Compared to firefighters, like, you know, maybe I'm asking the wrong question, but...
Yeah, we've got, we've got the number of firefighters on the line. So it's about seven, a seven to one ratio, for every seven firefighters you need. That's what this holds as, about seven.
So can you put something together, Michelle, send it to us?
Sure. We'll do that. The numbers that he's pointing out, the average city has five fire stations, and, you know, we may think we only have four, but a fifth one is out there, in our world. When the chief did this analysis, he also indicated his average is two assistant fire chiefs, and then there's also a number of bat chiefs and logistics captains. So we'll provide that information to you guys along with our whole chart.
I have a question about the inspector. We had that conversation a couple of months ago, because of the two hospitals, one of those that didn't have inspection fees were. It's been a long act, so I can't recall all of it. But do those fees cover the fire fees to, for inspections?
There's a separate fee for that.
There's a separate fee for that. Is that covered by the, is that enough to cover what we need? Is that some fee that we need? As we're in ready review, oversee fees, we need to be evaluating that, too, to help cover at least one of those positions? I don't think I've ever, a lot of you...
Chief, I don't think we have drastic inspection fee. I think we need to go to a square footage like development, we need to develop what's going on.
We were, we were way under on that, because I anticipate we're way under on fire. So I mean, that might be a way to start to find that position for the city.
Madal, do you have an answer?
We are currently in the process of assessing our master fee schedule. We hope to, I mean, we can incorporate that, in fact, it's part of our analysis for each project, and the time and money spent percentage rise on each project. So, I mean, we can try and do a preliminary rough assessment, but the full-scale study is going to come before work session, past our...
Yeah, past our budget time, but, you know, budgets change, these schedules change, things like that. So I just think it's worth taking a look at. I mean, we got to look at under every single rock, every ESS, to make sure that we're covering what we need to.
It is a heavy burden. What you think about it, just to do is plenty of police and fire. Police have one assistant chief, and then there's, Chief Howard, is it seven? Mike, is it seven or eight? Mike, Mike, there's seven or eight lieutenants, and we have...
Six.
Six lieutenants. So in fire, it's different, little bit of command structure, it's like you've got one assistant chief, and you've got three bat chiefs. You've got that one per shift. And then, what is happening, this is, this is the conversation that Neil and I've had quite then, is that they, the chiefs have to push some of that down to the bat chiefs, some of that administrative work overhead, and then the bat chief's got to push that down to the captain. The captain's got to push that down to different people. So everybody ends up doing more of that burden, when you could give some consolidation of that, and maybe you improve your efficiency by doing it. So it's definitely worth considering, and it is one of his highest goals. This was, I can't, we have to ask the question now, I've tried to, thank you. Conductive calls. Is this the chart you were looking for?
Yes, that is the chart.
So we did talk about that, that there, the budget presentation that we did. But you can see just since 2012 how it's just taken off. You know, it was, it was stable for a long time, and it's just absolutely just rocky.
This is a kind of a legal question, too, when it comes to this. As I mentioned something that you've called about, is, you know, you have to pay for ambulance rides. How often do we get reimbursed for that? Are we working with firms, just like we do with the local firms, to go after property tax people? So we make sure that we recover everything we could possibly cover from an insurance standpoint for every haul that we go to?
Yes, we do. But understand, and one thing our chief has shown us, and we can get you some stats on it, but over time, I mean, you have a large... we can get you some stats on it, but over time, I mean, you have a large amount of people who are uninsured and then trying to collect on that is, is a very, very difficult.
Our paramix is split, we're seeing more and more uninsured patients, so that means our collections are.
They stay fairly stable.
But we're still, we still have a lot on the table because of the uninsured and, you know, like I said, the paramix is different. Medicare, Medicaid is only up to fifty percent of it.
I did find a weakness that I should have mentioned, Chief.
Yes, she did.
In a personal experience and he's working outside, because there is insurance coverage out there that's not being matched and our administrator needs to manage that.
So, we collect about eight or nine hundred thousand dollars a year on that and maintain just the paramedic group, and I agree, just that call, it's, it's definitely.
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree, I was just, the question I did have.
Our rates are, we, we adjust our rates what, two years ago?
Uh, it's been about four, four years.
Four times, obviously.
Yes, it's the first, well, it's been nearly six years since it's first year I was here. We are, we are researching that today, we're working on that.
You want more administrative staff or something?
Yeah.
Mayor, in due, uh, next year, a lot of cities are taking this year to review their whole master rate schedule, their fee schedule, because they're recognizing that's still the way they're gonna make up some of that revenue, so it will move us to do the same thing.
And another, another thing that this position helps us do is maintain our best practices, that'd be part of that, so in state compliance with all the state and federal regulations, because we're running our chase and our tails constantly, try to make sure that we're not violated, so state and federal compliance.
All right.
Um, so, uh, we, okay, so then you have, uh, IT request, we, we talked about the IT manager a bit, Joey, you wanna talk about the application support analyst?
So, um, the application support, we're gonna have to support manager and, um, right now, obviously, it's just one position that's supporting all of our ERP applications as well as, uh, our intergo application and, um, it's come to the point where we're upgrading each system every other year, um, so that's really another full-time job, just do the upgrades, research, find out the right version, um, that's been tested, not the, the most recent version that everyone's still testing that's on it, um, so we were trying to get an extra person to help with all those upgrades that, like I said, are just non-stop, every year we upgrade a system, so that's what we're going with it.
Joey, on the IT manager, uh, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you, you had estimated the number of hours it would take to catch up on the backlog of projects, do you remember that offhand?
I think it was like a hundred and twenty?
Yeah, it's, well.
Hundred and twenty thousand.
A larger number.
No, it was a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So.
Hours.
So.
On working projects.
Yeah, and, and the thing is that, you know, with the staff they have, they get, they get through a lot of projects, but there's a backlog and things keep adding up.
Our IT staff is so lean.
Yeah, and I get tired of just telling, being told just to turn on the machine, you wanna do it. But it doesn't work when I push the button. Yeah, library, uh, tennis stuff here. Laurie, you wanna touch a little bit on kind of what the, the burden is there?
The Arts and Humanities Commission, their, uh, their operating budget and the amount that they've been, you know, budgeted, it's dramatically increased, uh, twenty fifteen, their operating budget was four thousand and then in twenty sixteen, their operating budget went from ten thousand and then to ten thousand and they got an additional forty thousand for public arts and with this increase, it enables the commission to do more, of course, well, doing more contests, having more sculpture, it requires staff time to coordinate all of this, we currently, our admin, um, when she does most of this stuff or a lot of this stuff, instead of getting overtime, she's taking comp time, she's nearing retirement, so we're gonna have to start taking that institutional knowledge that she has, leaning that from her, as well as, you know, getting someone to, to assist with this, because we're not always going to have somebody, I think, who's going to take that comp time instead of overtime, um, so all of that is the reason why we have wanted this, this, uh, not an additional position, but just adding ten hours a week to, to a position that we already have.
Thank you.
Let's see, uh, we talked about making specialists, Paige, can you talk about the marketing and sponsorship coordinator?
I can, um, as we add, as, as everybody knows, right now, we have one Special Events and Marketing Coordinator, um, that is a full-time position, um, over the last couple of years, we've added several events with the potential to add even additional events downtown, we've been participating in Main Street Market, we've participated in the Docathon, and it's becoming a little overwhelming for one person to manage every special event we do, plus all of our marketing and all of our sponsorships, so our hope was to split that out, have someone to take care of the logistics and the operations of all the special events that we are taking on, um, and doing, and then have a second person to help with marketing and then really go out and look at what sponsorship opportunities are out there for special events, there are dollars available, we just don't have time to go find them, that's the honest reality about it.
But can you, can you watch it, go revenue to manage it, to fund it? And then make your revenue budget?
It's a tough.
It's no different than a grants position.
Right, hopefully, yes.
That's what you gotta look at.
So, it'd be awesome, it's just hard to say the first year that's one hundred, right? So, do that to me.
You love that administrative stuff, Angie, put your pencil to the table.
I, we thought, and Erin and I have picked and looked and it's just, you know, that's one portion of their position, we do a huge marketing blast for not only our programs, but for our events and that marketing position advertises everything Parks and Recreation does and it's a lot to take on for one person, so this person would kind of be, it would be having to make sixty-four thousand dollars in sponsorship money that could go to an event, to offset.
I just don't think it's a sixty-four thousand dollar spread, I think there's a more realistic spread.
Makes sense.
And we tend to.
Not always include that kind of stuff. That's true.
Uh, let's see, Police Department, Mike, can you talk about your CID Sergeant?
CID clerk, part-time clerk, we wanted that to be a full-time, but we, uh, because of the needs for more officers, make it a part-time, the Dallas County has increased the way we do, or changed the way we do data entry, uh, we have tech share and we have to enter things from computer, our detectives are, are averaging thirty cases, forty cases a month each, and each one of those require data entry into the computer system, they're turning out to be clerks and not investigators, so we have this part-time clerk who's data entry, all this stuff for us, and it helps the, the investigators free up time to actually do investigations and all the other things they do in the field.
How much, how much is that position full-time?
Uh, it was less, forty, thirty, about forty, wasn't it?
About thirty?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-six, somewhere in there.
It's, it's kind of a low entry.
No, it's gonna be more than double eighteen because, because of the benefits.
Yeah.
That's about thirty thousand dollars.
It's a low entry level position, but it's a, it's a very important position for CID because they're just overloaded in data entry and things, the system's changing everywhere.
It's probably not impossible, but can you use volunteers at all to?
No, because you get into signatures requirements and that tech share is a very complicated position and we have, it takes time to learn it, we try to get volunteers to learn it, it's, it's problematic, we've tried that, we put officers in there, put their own light duty and try to get people to do it, and that's even problematic.
I think it would be a little bit.
And then Mike, your CID Sergeant?
Uh, the CID Sergeant is, uh, we're getting, like I said, we're getting overloaded in there again with cases, Oscar Cantu's handling all of that, we have, uh, eight investigators, he's just getting overloaded in there himself, so we're trying to get him, so we're in the same situation deal, we're just trying to get some breakdown with the responsibilities of a sergeant over four people instead of one sergeant over eight.
Mike, you mentioned a minute ago that your, your investigators were taking on thirty to forty new cases a month?
Their average, not new cases a month, their average carrying load of thirty-five cases, so, so they'll lose a case and then they'll gain cases, some of them are complex, some of them are fairly easy, but they all require some type of callback to citizens or some type of formal investigation with follow-up paperwork.
Uh, down to the quarters, uh, Eric, can you talk about your vehicle technician, I think we just got a couple of that guy's and then we can maybe talk about some decision points for tonight.
Yes, so vehicle maintenance, the industry standard is thirty-five vehicles per mechanic and we're at two hundred and twenty-five for one on vehicles. To, oh, wait, wait, to mechanics, we sent out seventy-one.
We mentioned that Rallies on the lead, I said he's an art faculty, is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I hear that. We sent out seventy-one vehicles to dealership shops around in the Garland, Rockwell Downs area that we have, that we could have made repairs in house, so we got to take two people to take the car there, drive some back and then the car ready to travel, we take two people.
I'll tell you the same thing I just told Angie, cut the expense of the other department and hire an employee in the other line item.
Yeah.
Sorry, but, I mean, you're gonna reduce your expense by not having to take those out to help yourself.
Yeah.
Don't, don't look at that. I'm sorry.
So, on these, uh, GIS partner, GIS technician, so, uh, GIS data is, is vital to the asset management software, so the information has to be real time, update, it's a specialized, uh, function and, uh, we're funding a GIS person right now, we're in Joey's department, I don't think he has the space to have a full-time person, but, so that's why we're hosting them in, uh, Pellet Works and then, uh, any function that we do in the field has to be put, updated in GIS, so we'll know what section of line do your place, what meeting do your place, what highest can we, uh, estimate it on to, to make budget decisions and quicker decision to fill the current updated data, so right now it's taking us one of the, uh, very skilled GIS person the whole year and still haven't caught up to the information I'm getting now, so we have to pull it as bills, so we follow the pull version, it's just in play away to function.
Gary, is there any way you can tell the time that you could send it out to the issues?
It's about eighty thousand dollars on those.
Seventy-one?
Eighty thousand dollars have been sent out for the, for the repairs, some of them are specialized equipment, it's gonna do transmissions, some of them are.
Still have equipment costs.
Some of them are labor intensive.
No cost.
But, uh, it's about a kind of.
So, Councilor, for tonight, we're, uh, now well into past our three hours.
I'm not ready to conclude.
Oh, I'm not, me either. What I was gonna ask, uh, is that we, uh, you know, well, okay, so, so.
I'm flipping pages. Um, so, I'll take services, I ask for details, thank you, Wendy, for giving this, everybody in council's got all this, um, it's a lot of detail, but I still, we've got lots of questions about this, so, um, I think it's pretty the hour now, but, um, I think we need some more information about several of these categories.
Can you give us, uh, which one?
Well, uh, Mark, Mark did a really good summarization here, um, and I think what's probably best is if we just email these questions, um, and then we'll go over them in a public meeting with the questions and the answers in the next budget session. So please look at this, if you have any questions, send those emails in, um.
And I guess copy, uh, so we send it to Laura, so it should be mystery, I guess, so we'll have different page.
I don't, I don't think you have to do that, I think Lot and Wendy will get all the questions and if they're duplicated, they will.
Right, well, we'll collate everything into one list and then whatever's doubled will throw out.
And then we'll also compile all the comments, uh, and any questions that we may ask.
The thing is it takes more to even put the questions together, so.
Well, you could just copy that piece of paper right there and hand it to Lot tonight, okay?
So, Mayor, you wanna put a deadline on that so that we don't bombard them after the fact and then they have to region work them all out?
Yeah, that's what I'm contemplating this to do.
Two hours. Two hours, no, go ahead, I know you're a miracle maker. Um, what do you think is reasonable for that, because I don't want to, for them to, to have to do a question at the eleventh hour.
Well, would you all, I, I don't think it just is, is this list either.
I think it's things probably generally general.
Yeah, so if there's questions that you have on the budget that haven't been answered tonight, put those in an email also and we'll go over all those questions and answers in a public forum, just like they always do. Um, what is tonight, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
So, by Tuesday next week?
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah. Uh, we would ask the two, the two better though.
Yes, yes.
What I was gonna, um, a little longer, what I was gonna ask is, um, we're not really asking for decision points tonight, but if there are things we definitely want followed up with for August twenty-seventh's meeting, we would like to know that if possible, because once we hit the twenty-seventh, it's just such a short period of time to get to, you know, and that's when we start the public hearings on August twentieth and then the September third, or whatever that date was, so, uh, so if there's, if there's anything that tonight, that we're ready to make decision points on or, you know, we want concrete follow-up on, we have some that we have already picked up, then we'd like to hear that tonight.
I think we've heard most of everything, I, I can't make any conclusions without having more data on some of those questions, but.
I agree.
Counselor, do you have?
Why don't you send them, you, well, you can send them to me or Wendy, but, um, why don't you send them to me and I'll make sure I get it to the right meeting, how's that? It's that easy, it's just at this point.
I think that, you know, we didn't go over the CIP or the debt stuff tonight, but we asked that question, I think you all should do a little bit of research on that area. Counselor, are there anything other areas that we didn't cover tonight that you'd like more information on?
Right.
And certainly, um, if you don't think of it off the top of your head tonight, if you think of it over the next couple of days, put it in your email.
If you would help, if you have specific questions, give us a little chance to, uh, respond to.
I have a question about, I have, I always have questions about the G and A transfers on drives and nuts.
Well, we have an expert in here, but.
Mayor, what they. We usually sit down with the CFO and just go through it, it's really.
I can send you the report, we've got, I think we did last year, we can, we can also email that to all council members, the methodology has not changed, it's a very high level, um, cost allocation, it's not an activity based costing cost allocation, so.
I think it'd be good to have that information. And I think this is like totally a relevant question, about on page, on page twenty-three, city expenses and budgets for directly or indirectly influencing outcome of legislation, what you can, no?
That is a new state requirement that we have to do this, per TML, I didn't, and it's only has to be in a proposed budget, not an out to budget, to figure that one out, I don't, I, I don't have an answer for you, you asking where the, uh.
What's the one thirty?
The one thirty, okay, so that is, what we did is we pulled the association dues budget from citywide, the city, the association dues paid to the professional associations, the vast majority of those professional associations have a lobbying arm, GF O A, GF O A T, TML, APWA, all of them have, we, that's the best methodology we came up with to pull the direct or indirect contribution to lobbying, that's, when we first got this from TML, I was sitting here going, you know, we.
What's not a TML, well, it's a state law.
Well, but TML is what, well, who's communicated to us, I have no idea.
I just don't want the public to think TML is dictating disclosures or not.
This is a new, this is a state legislation requirement that TML has communicated to the cities.
Right.
And when, when we got that memo, um, Wendy and I went, well, how do we best pull this out?
That's why we added the memo.
We know that, yeah.
We had that statement, those are clearly association dues and that is a correct spend to lobbying correctly.
Right, yeah, so for example, for the GF O A cost that, you know, the dues that we pay, when, you know, that I pay, Wendy paying everybody, we get a lot of them, you know, we get trainings, we get conferences, however, part of those dues probably do go to support the GF O A lobbying efforts and we don't know, you know, they have a budget just like we do and they allocate as needed and, you know, I can't tell you what part. And we don't know, you know, they have a budget just like we do, and they allocate as needed, and, you know, I can't tell you what part of my dues goes to that, and.
Well, you know, the, the state legislature wants to get, go, do away with lobbying efforts by municipalities. And I just see this number getting a high profile, and, um, I just think we need to be really careful that we understand what this number is. Even though it has nothing to do with budget. So, when do we have to disclose that?
We have to disclose that every proposed budget.
So we've already done that?
So we just disclosed it?
We just disclosed it, we don't need to do it anymore, and out of the, I have not included that in the adopted because they don't have to.
So we've just done what we needed to do.
Pretty much, yes.
And areas published now, so.
Yeah, it's, it's another line and check, one, check off, isn't it?
So you know that position that we were going to assign you as our lobbying, um, representative, not a lobbying representative, uh, that helps out, right? Okay, you got it, it's Whitney's salary now. Cover me on the pair, that might be something you want to keep your eye on.
Yeah.
Well, there was a bigger bill that failed.
Yeah.
That, this was, this was a result of a smaller bill.
I understand that, but I just think maybe we need to keep our eye on this and.
That Dicker Bill would have made it impossible for T M L to do its job.
So, is this an appropriate time to, um, maybe discuss some direction, at least from the council, about where we, what our absolutes are, absolute nots are, as far as?
That would be a big help to us, to be a, that's probably saying, we could wait until the twenty-seventh for final decision. But if any decision counts as comfortable tonight, that would give us more time to act, but at least a couple of weeks actually to do something with.
I don't know, my absolutes, does that mean all the?
That's, I could give you an answer right now.
Well, get us the questions, give us a chance to answer those, earlier the better, if we can, not going to push you guys, but, um, we will, as the mayor said, we'll have those available. We'll get them to you all earlier, we'll have them available at the twenty-seventh, so we'll make sure we go through those. In the meantime.
I'm just going page by page with my questions, to see if there's something that's going to answer. Um, Richard, page thirty-six, employee health benefits overview. Retiree portion of revenue going down by more than half next year, what was, what on there?
We had at least two retirees who were paying for family coverage at a very high rate. So they're paying hundred twenty percent premium. They came off the plan, so we are now down to really only employ only individuals on the retiree plan, and so the number went down. It was really a contribution by true community.
So your stock loss, you should go down. Sorry, I had to say it.
Unfortunately, uh, this year's okay, but in future years.
It's not just Dave, it's a good shit.
Yeah, we had people come off that were, you know, had high premiums.
Okay, just try to figure out if you change the plans.
Yeah.
I think another important thing to maybe look at, um, from speaking of what Tammy said about Garland, um, I think it'd be interesting to find out what, um, percentage workforce that we have in the city, working for the city of his, at retirement age or year. With Garland being forty percent who will save next year, all of them.
It's a fairly, it's fairly easy to do.
Just something interesting.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, thank you.
You guys don't have to say anything else. Was that fun?